And I'm excited to have everybody here. If everybody would please silence your cellphone and please stand for a prayer and a pledge and if you would like. Gracious God, we give you thanks that we're able to gather here today. We give you thanks for our, our city and all the directors and everybody that's present at this meeting and our council. And we just ask for your guidance and direction as we go forward to help grow the future of the city and the youth of this city and taking care of the finances of this city. In Christ's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner, absent. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood, absent, and Councilmember Crenshaw, absent.
All right, Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and staff and those that are listening in other means here this morning. I'd like to welcome you to our first public budget discussion of the year for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget process. This process has started some time ago. It started back in February with staff putting things together and getting numbers together for projects. And we're beginning here, getting to here. We're looking at three, four workshops with City Council. And we're having those workshops with City Council. So this is basically the budget kickoff. This is an opportunity for everybody to get a good understanding of the, what goes on with the city, opportunity to ask questions, opportunity to look at, at projects. Next slide. Today, the agenda, of course, I just mentioned this, the budget kickoff. But I'm gonna do a somewhat brief municipal finance one-on-one little discussion, just to go over some things. Don't want to insult anyone's intelligence on budgeting, but some terms and terminology is just different. So we just want to mention some of those things as we go through the process. The, the, the main goal of to do, one of the main goals of today is the CIP, five-year capital improvement program, or sometimes we call it community improvement, improvement program. What you're gonna hear from staff on every proposed project in that capital improvement program today. And then we're gonna hear goals and priorities of the City Council where you have the ability to, to, say, mention your goals and priorities for this budget, for this year, or for the next five years, since it's a five-year CIP. So you have to be able to have those, that input. Excellent. Budget standards, just some things that we look at standards and main thing is transparency. And just what we're doing today in this process shows that what we're all about is transparency. We want the public to, to be able to sit in on these discussions. We want them to be able to have input in what we're doing. We want City Council to have input from the beginning of the budgeting. It's now six, seven-month process. There used to be, you could get in and do a budget in a month and it was done. But now in cities, it takes that long to get a budget done. So we want to be transparent and make sure everybody has, has that input. And financially accountable, you know, that's what cities are about, being financially accountable. So everyone can see what's there, can see the numbers that are there and make sure that we follow the regulatory guidelines we're to, to follow in budgeting. And then it meets the city's financial policies. As a part of the budget, you adopt financial policies. And we have to adhere to those policies and not mention the regulatory standards. A quick glimpse at the budget calendar. As you can see, February fourteenth is kicked off with the five-year CIP kickoff with staff. Whether they were looking at working with worksheets and working within their departments and divisions and putting it together. We start working from the previous year, years CIP and go to here. If you, as you go down the page, you can see official budget kickoff meeting was April sixteenth. That was with staff. Can we, you can get, next slide. This meeting is here, May twenty-second, is for, first budget work session on the CIP. We're, we're scheduled for a second budget workshop with City Council on June eleventh. A special meeting where we go over key budget items and topics and discussions. And we'll go through all of this calendar, but this will go through to September. And by September, you'll be approving tax rates and approving a, a proposal, look, a review on a proposed budget. Excellent. Just found a little municipal finance one-on-one presentation. I found it on the internet by Ellis Public Finance Advisors. Gonna go through it and it kind of covers some key things about budgeting and government budgeting as we go through some of the core concepts. We're talking about fund accounting, city, city budget is based on funds, general funds, water, wastewater funds, enterprise funds, different funds. And we'll mention some of those. And the primary, primary public finance documents. You heard one of the primary ones the other day when you heard the audit. That's a primary public document. Your budget is another primary document. The monthly financial reports, they're, they're primary public documents. I mentioned the calendar already. Common resource, revenue, resources and expenditures, we'll touch on that a little bit. Financial policies and financial methods. Excellent. Funding county, you know, some method of separating financial resources into categories. You know, general fund is what we get from tax dollars, sales tax, user fees, et cetera. Dollars goes into those funds. But the main thing about accounting, accounting for cities, it's in financial circles, it's more about accountability than profitability. It's about being accountable to your citizens, to your taxpayers. About finding that, that sweet spot where you can charge for fees, you can charge for taxes, but not be over a burden, but still be able to cover the cost of doing business and doing that business. Revenue expenditures held, you know, tracked in several funds. I mentioned governmental funds, proprietary funds and fiduciary funds, we'll briefly touch on. Excellent. Governmental funds, a few governmental funds. General fund is a governmental fund. This activity is largely supported by taxes and grants and other similar sources. There are special revenue funds where we gain other revenues throughout the city for different services. And they are there. Debt service, debt service fund. Part of, we have a sixty-five cents approximately tax rate. And seventeen percent of that goes to debt service. So there's a fund, I and S fund that's created for that debt service in that fund there. Then capital, capital project funds, which is mostly for capital projects such as construction, equipment, large, large purchases. Then there are, thank you, thank you, you're good. Proprietary funds, enterprise funds, you know, we have funds where we collect money. Basically, we provide services in those enterprise funds. We have a water store utility where we charge fees for it. And that money comes into a utility fund. We have services like golf courses, sports complexes, and we charge for those. So those dollars come into those proprietary funds. On here, this is not, this presentation is not specific to Beaumont, but it's, it covers it. You know, we say arenas, but we have things like civic centers and event centers that we charge for in those. They create funds and of course we get other taxes like, like liquor taxes too. Excellent. Then there is fund accounting, fiduciary funds, you know, account, health assets, trust funds. We have pensions. We have a TMRS pension fund where we create, have large amount of dollars for our employees into those funds. We, we, we contribute to the fire department, Beaumont firefighters retirement fund. So we have funds for that and other purposes. Excellent. Key public finance documents, next slide. Independent auditor, this report. This is basically the annual comprehensive financial report. This is, that's what you got this week. And this, these are the documents that compile your audit report, your, your report. You got a management discussion letter. You get balance sheets, you get statements of revenues, cash, et cetera. Notes on financial statements and other financial data. So that's basically your, your annual comprehensive financial report document. And that, that's like these, these reports you got and the other financial report. Thank you. Excellent. And then the budget, you know, budgets can be done annually or bi- bi-annual. The city of Beaumont's budget is done annually. Every year we do budget. Again, it requires early engagement with staff, early engagement with council and early engagement with the public. In particular with the council to find priorities, identify fiscal priorities. Yeah, that's important for you. And then it places those prior to the context with competing demands for resources. There's the thought that cities have unlimited resources and we don't have unlimited resources. It's a quite a competitive process for, for those dollars. Just this weekend, City Council, you, you heard about a great all that was three hundred forty thousand dollars. But that great all, when it competes for dollars for a new, when it's competing against police cars, it's competing against fire trucks. It's competing against parks, cause it's funded through general fund and those funds. So it doesn't have a, an enterprise fund to pay for it. So it's a highly competitive process in putting a budget together. And then there's, of course, the budget's approved by the governing body, which is you. Excellent. Typical budget process and, and, you know, surprisingly, you know, this is pretty much in line with what we're doing. And again, I got, got this off the internet, but it's what we're doing. City Council's goal setting, goal setting today. Then staff prepares the budget, puts the budget together. Then City Council work sessions, I mentioned that we're scheduled for three. But it won't actually only be work sessions. There will be some items during regular, regular City Council meetings in which you will approve some items that associated with the budget. There, you'll be hearing reports, et cetera. Then there are preliminary property tax levy. At some point, you'll set a preliminary tax rate. Well, we'll receive preliminary tax rolls from the appraisal district. And we get those dollars and of course they are verified at the end and what they're gonna be. Of course, there, there will be public hearings and a final property tax levy will be done and the budget will be adopted. Excellent. I won't touch on this much, cause you're gonna hear this more from other staff members about the capital improvement plan. We have a five-year plan here that's updated annually for sure. Hey, Councilmember, good to see you. Good morning. That will do the different things. Capital improvement, it just doesn't list projects. It just identifies funding sources, you know, whether it's funded by tax, whether it's funded by fees, debt, et cetera. Next slide. Won't touch on this much, long-range financial planning. And Beaumont is more of a five-year financial planning process. And we'll just end, go, end at that. Next slide. Likewise, we can skip this slide too. But some of the primary communications vehicles with, with financing and to determine your short-term financial health, internal documents, you get, again, you get monthly budget reports, departmental reports. You get statements and then long-term financial health. CIP could contribute to that long-term financial health and communicating to you and what's going on with that. Next slide. Finance calendar, next slide. Let's skip this one. It doesn't contain so much, we can skip it. Skip it. Just jump on revenue sources. This is not the city of Beaumont's revenue sources. This is just an example of revenue sources. The city of Beaumont gets most of its revenue from property taxes and, and sales tax. As a matter of fact, it's almost exactly the same. Thirty-two percent of our revenues come from sales tax and thirty-two percent of our revenues come from property tax. And they comprise most of our revenues out there, which is about sixty-four percent of, of our revenues. Other things are user fees we get revenues from and such. Next slide. Again, this is not the city of Beaumont's slide, but this is an example here. Yes, you can see, it's typical for public safety to be the majority of the budget. But here, this example says it's about fifty percent. Typical cities, that's about fifty, forty-nine, fifty percent of a total budget. Also, in our public works, it's approximately about twelve percent here in Beaumont as part of the budget. And the rest is basically again, like parks and, and other activities. Next slide. Other fund revenue sources, again, capital fund, which is a, a large fund that does large projects and, you know, the construction projects and, and employee payments, things like that. It's funded through property taxes, bond proceeds, bond when you issue bonds. Like you did the other day, that money goes into a capital fund for those projects to be completed, to be done, to be built, et cetera. We don't have park dedication fees in, in Beaumont. That's when our developer comes in, does a project and they dedicate money to a fund for future park expansion. But we have other assessment. We also have sales, sales and use tax. And we do have some franchise fees here. And the enterprise funds were basically where we charge, where we provide a service that we get revenue from. From sales, we sell services, we sell water, we, we sell service to our landfill. Those dollars come in into our enterprise fund. Next slide. I got a capital fund, other expenditures, and I kind of mentioned some things that expended out of the capital fund. Professional services, construction projects, equipment, bond issuance costs. There's a cost associated with issuing bonds. And then with the enterprise funds, you know, where we collect money and have expenditures, we have things like contractual service, employee services. Next slide. Property tax revenue, you know, what is it? You know, it's just, it's, it's funding, major source of funding that's certified by the municipal, municipal governing body, which is, which is you. And it's spread among the local property owners. It's, we, we charge a property tax that's collected and we set that rate at sixty-five cents. Next slide. This kind of gives an example of, of a typical house, you know, and how property tax revenue and highs determine. You know, state legislature, the things we do are determined by the state legislature. And the state legislature, legislature sets those limits. It sets those limits on taxes amount we can levy. Believe it or not, a city can go up, the last time I checked, to as much as a two dollars and fifty cent property tax rate. But nobody will go to there, do a two dollars and fifty cent property tax rate at all. You know, there can be a combined property tax rate. If there's a city, we can have a tax rate, we can do a mud that can have its own tax rate of ninety cents. And that can be a water district that can have its tax rate. But you have taxing jurisdictions. Here, we have different taxing jurisdictions. It's not just the city of Beaumont. You have the Jefferson County, you have the Water District Six, you have the Port of Beaumont. You have, and then you have a total overall property tax rate for a person. So while we're only sixty-five cents, a person's total tax liability might be as much as two dollars and something instead of sixty-five cents when you combine all the different taxing authorities that are out there. And again, we set the tax rate, but the county assessor sets the evaluation of properties, which is very key, cause whatever, our property tax rate is multiplied times the value of that property or divided court by that property. So if it's a hundred thousand dollar house and then it, you know, you got a sixty-five hundred, sixty-five hundred dollar tax rate, whatever that may come out to. But when they increase the value of that house, that means the tax rate goes up. I mean, the tax bill goes up no matter what we do. So it's not just the city that determines that tax rate, it's the amount that the, that property is evaluated at. And that's been a lot of, been some makeup in the tax rate here in Beaumont. And so that's impacted some people here. And while it brings in more money and people will say, well, the city, and it's nothing, not, not the county assessor's fault. But, well, people will come to City Hall and say, y'all are going up on my taxes. But actually, we lowered the, we've lowered the tax rate the last five years. But if the assessed value goes up, the property, the property bill's gonna go up. Next slide. I kind of covered some of what this was talking about, you know, the, the county auditor. There's the certified road set by the county, not us. Things like that, I think I kind of covered this in that discussion. Next slide. Two, this, this gives you competition. You'll get a copy of this presentation so you can get it and look over it and if you have any questions. Cause today's mainly about the CIP and I don't, I don't want to get bogged down. But I just wanted to share some of these things. Next slide. Next slide. Other revenue sources, bond proceeds, you know, it's restricted for the purpose of debt that was issued. That revenue, like when you, you posted that notice this week to possibly go out for, for bonds. Those are, that's revenue to a city, you know, and a governmental revenues to a city again, where we charge for services. Special assessments of properties, which we don't have many special assessments as a city here. But again, I, I mentioned that if a mud were to come in or a municipal development district comes in, they have their own taxing rates. They get special amenities in their neighborhood for, for that tax rate. So it's, it's a special assessment to them to be able to have a lazy river in their, in their neighborhood, et cetera. Next slide. Excellent. Financial policies, they're, while they're important, financial policy as a city, you have to adopt a financial policy every year. It's important that you do that. Please take that responsibility serious and, and look at the financial policy that will be presented to you for there. Because it's key for financial management and what you're doing. It promotes stability and continuity for the city. It provides a guideline for us to operate by and a financial policy. And it supports your bond ratings. They look at your financial policy when we go out, when we got the rerating with standard and pores week before last. They examine our financial policies and see what they're like. And that's a big part in them, how they score and rate us as a city. And it helps ensure compliance with statutory requirements. It's just not our policies, but their general finance office association policies to go by. Their GAAP general accepted accounting principle policies to go by. So we have to make sure we comply with those policies. Excellent. This, again, this is not outside, fine balance and cash reserves, you know, it's good to have. And as part of that policy, you will set what that amount is. Right now for general fund is twenty percent. For the city of Beaumont, for your water funds, it's approximately fifteen percent and stuff, if I get that number wrong. Correct me for there. But it just provides flexibility in what you're doing, maintain fiscal responsibility in, in what you're doing. Excellent. Debt, debt, again, GFOA practices, general finance office association, best practice in, in having debt limits and issuing debt. Make sure you just structure it properly. You have your financial advisor the other day mentioned about, a little bit about how you have some debt structured and how some of that debt is periodically refunded or refinanced to achieve savings, to get lower rates, et cetera. Next slide. Policies, continued budgeting and planning. Just, not much yet. I, I would like to mention about the cash management and investment. Whatever would you do as a city investing, the number one priority you do in investing dollars and, and our financial policies to make sure it's a safe investment. Safety is number one. Liquidity is two. It's like, how can we get that money if we need it for, for different things? And three is a return. Cities and cities are limited or it might be illegal to invest city dollars in high-risk investments. You know, you, you can't put your money directly into the stock market. It's gotta be safe, it's gotta be liquid and it's gotta have, still have the best return you can probably possibly get on it. And there are permissible investments and there's some of that's limited by law too, I think. And this takes constant monitoring of, of your investments. Procurement, that came up a little bit this week. Procurement policy, these are financial policies. We have a procurement purchasing policy that's adopted by this council. Councils adopt those. We purchase things through a requisition process. Then there are RFPs, we go through RFPs through our purchasing department that do that. And then there's policies for vendor selection. So we'll get you some copies of that and share it with you. We'd be able to look at those purchasing policies. And then there are terms and conditions. And capital asset management, we have to manage those assets and make sure that they're maintained, repaired and replaced on a, on a, on a constant basis. Fleet maintenance, maintenance has a replacement calendar scale depreciation. I forget what they call it, scale for replacing vehicles. So those things are, are timed out to be done. Next slide. Internal policies, you know, delegation of authority. There's different levels of authority and what you, this can be done financially within the city. Employees can only have a certain purchasing level themselves. Directors have another level that they, a personal authority. The city manager has a level of purchasing authority. And then it takes then city council level purchasing of, of authority. So there's delegation of authority of purchasing. And it requires different people, different signatures to get things purchased. Segregation of duties and disbursements, just to control, another control to make sure that things are not likely to happen that are bad. You know, you don't want the same person who's collecting the money to be the one to count it and take it to the bank. You don't want to be the one that, that's doing it to write the checks. So there are segregation of duties throughout the city for internal control policies and systems. Mentioned kind of expenditure authorization. Then there's conflicts of interest. If any employee has a conflict of interest, they, they're to fill out an affidavit and, and that. Likewise, you as a council, if you have conflicts of interest, you, you need to disclose those. And if this has something to do with the city's finances, finances. Next slide. Methods, sorry, June, y'all, I didn't mean to talk so long. But funding sources, just a few funding sources. Tax levy, we talked about that, you're getting money through taxes. That's a big part of what you do. State aid, Texas, you need, cities get almost nothing from state aid, from the state of Texas. Some, some cities in this country get, the majority of the budget comes from their state coffers. And they don't have local income taxes and that, so they get their money from the state. But the state of Texas, we have to have this local income tax and we get virtually nothing. And grants, we do, we do, and our audit was completed the other And grants, we do, we do, and our audit was completed the other day. We have a total of about twenty nine million dollars in grant dollars coming to the city of Beaumont from different sources, federal, best federal, twenty eight million or so is from federal sources. One millions, uh, about approximately one million state money grants from there. Then reserves and fund balance, uh, you know, reserves and fund balance are, are part of funding. You know, they get to a point where you, you can use those dollars. We, we adjusted our policy here to where it can recurring, non-recurring purchases can be used to, to be purchased out of fund balance. So that's part of it. And then the fund loans, there are times that different funds, your water fund might loan money to the general fund or the general fund might loan money to the solid waste fund or, uh, the different funds. And so sometimes there are times that different dollars will cross funds. Dollar way dollars can cross funds, uh, in this city is by approval of the city council. City manager can't transfer money across funds, that takes your approval. City manager can, uh, allocate dollars within a fund and, and adjust, make adjustments to council. But it cross funds council. Uh, then debt issuances like such as what you did the other day to fund projects. I think I'm almost finished, next slide. That's, that's, next slide. Debt issuances, you know, debt issuance, again, that, that's schedule on repayment schedule to, you know, fiscal objectives. You have, uh, you know, twenty year, typically debt issuances are twenty years, twenty to twenty five years. Cities typically don't go past that amount of years in issuing major debt and repayment. And then at the bottom there's general obligation bonds, you know, which is your pledging a part of your tax rate to pay those dollars back. And you can usually, usually get really good interest rates on that because these are some of the best bonds on the market that are backed by a city's tax rate. That's taxes, cities typically don't go out of business. So, uh, the market out there is really attentive to when city issues, cities issue GOs. Next slide. And that's all I have. I just want to do a quick overview of more finance one-on-one, talk about some things. If you have any questions about any of that, I'd be glad to answer. If not, we can move to the next slide.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll cover the next few slides. June Ellis, Assistant City Manager. So the, the budget is required, the city has to create an annual budget. That's required by two laws. One is the city charter. And the other is the state local government code. So in the city's charter, under Article Six, Section Two, it states that the city manager shall prepare the annual budget consistent with state law. In the Texas Local Government Code, under Chapter One O Two Municipal Budget, it states that the budget officer shall prepare each year a municipal budget to cover proposed expenditures of the municipal government for the succeeding year. So the budget officer for a city, uh, is the city manager. So, uh, this, the city has to create an annual budget and most cities do, you know, actually all cities, cities do unless they want to be out of compliance with state law. And that's the process that Beaumont has done probably for decades since its, its existence. And we continue to do that each year. We've started that process here back in February with, uh, kicking off the annual CIP uh, adoption as well as a regular budget adoption. So we are in compliance with, uh, the state law and the city charter with regard to the annual budget. Next slide. In the city charter, under section, Article Six, Section Nineteen, this is where it specifically speaks to the CIP, uh, requirement, which is what you will hear today from various city staff. It states that the city manager shall prepare and submit to the city council a five-year capital program prior to the final date of submission of the budget. Then below that, uh, under the capital program, where it says the capital program shall include these three things, a clear general summary of its content. And before you, you have the five-year CIP document that was printed by staff. And, uh, I'm told that, uh, if any of the council members or the mayor did not pick up your five-year CIP document, this is a document here, it should be in front of you. And this is, this is the CIP, this is what we will cover today. And, and this is the proposed document that will later be submitted to city council for approval when you approve the city's annual budget. So it does have a clear general summary of the, of its contents. It lists the capital improvements which are proposed to be undertaken during the next five fiscal years. And we include cost estimates and how we're going to finance the projects. And we have a, a schedule for when the city proposes to undertake these projects over the next five years. So we are in compliance with, with the city charter, uh, Section Nineteen. Next slide. So in your document that you have before you, and, and we print out this document annually. Once city council adopts the five-year CIP, uh, that's normally done in September when the city council adopts the budget, we go and print out this document. As you can see, the document has proposed right before, right above five-year community investment plan, we have proposed. So this is currently the, the proposed CIP. Staff has been working on preparing this document since mid-February. And in the document, you have a table of contents. We have an executive summary, which is a one-page summary of, of what, of the purpose of the CIP. And, and it provides information that is very useful to the average reader of this document. We have a financial summary roll-up in the document as well. That summary roll-up shows the dollar amounts by year, by project. And then it shows the grand total over five, uh, fiscal, o- over the five fiscal years for the five-year CIP. So it covers the entire span of, uh, of the five years required by city charter. We also have a couple of charts included in the five-year CIP document. One chart includes project cost by category. Another chart, total cost by funding source. Those two charts on page two of the document that you have. The bulk of the five-year CIP includes the CIP worksheets. Those are the individual worksheets that each staff member, each department worked on to plan out the five-year CIP for individual projects. Those worksheets have, uh, descriptions for each project, uh, cost, uh, a time schedule for those projects. Uh, and that's the, that's the bulk of, of this document. We also have near the back, we have CIP policies and procedures that we operate by. And on page one sixty-three of the document that you have in front of you, we have definitions and acronyms to help the average reader and user of this document. We, we put this document on the city's website annually. And, and the purpose is for anyone to look at how the city is investing in, in our community, how money is being allocated, the long-term vision that we have to help improve, uh, the city of Beaumont. Next slide. So what's the, what's the benefit of a CIP? And we call ours Community Investment Plan because we want to highlight that we are investing in our community through this plan. So one of the benefits is the long-term community vision and planning for capital needs. We don't just look at CIP projects on a one-year basis. We, we look out five years and actually beyond. You will see in the document that we have a, a column to the far right called Future Consideration. So we, we actually look beyond the five years and consider projects that are needed, uh, within, within this community. And, and we get feedback from, you know, city staff, you know, in terms of where, where do, do these projects come from that are in the document? City staff that are out in the field each and every day, they know what the issues are. And they bring those to the city so that we can include those as CIP projects. Whether it's, it's streets and street staff, if they see majors issues with a particular street, then, then tho- those streets, then streets are considered, uh, as we go through the process. Water and wastewater issues, those individuals who are working at, uh, our plants uh, bring to the city the, the needs, uh, that are incorporated in the CIP. We also receive feedback from the citizens. So i- it's just not what staff needs are. We receive feedback from citizens in terms of, of their needs and their requests for the city to invest, uh, within their neighborhood, uh, and to invest in, in Beaumont. Second bullet, the ability to incorp-, uh, ability to incorporate needs from other planning documents. So when we prepare the CIP, we, we include other documents as well, the strategic plan, pavement condition study, the newly adopted parks, recreation and green space master plan that, uh, you will see and hear from staff today. Some of those recommendations from the parks master plan that city council approved two days ago. Sidewalk master plan, we hope to soon, uh, be able to have funding for sidewalk master plan as well as the comprehensive plan. Uh, resident, the, another benefit is resident and future residents. They will see how the city of Beaumont is, is, is investing in, in the quality of life, um, in the city. And another important thing is transparency. Again, we, we put this document on the city's website. We, when we update it, we keep the old document on the website from the prior year and, and update it with, with the new CIP to help increase transparency. And we direct citizens to go to the website to look at the various CIP projects that we are planning for, uh, uh, the next five years and beyond. We also have to consider the cash flow, uh, money coming in, how we need to finance these, these various projects, how they impact, what, what their impact is on the operating budget. If we build a new facility, it would be part of the CIP, uh, document. But then we need to consider the operational impact in terms of, we're going to need, in terms of staffing or material and supplies or equipment for, um, for a new facility. Future water sewer rate increases. This document is really important for us to determine, especially for water and sewer, in particular, for water and sewer, what our future water rate increases are. Once this document is reviewed today and, and if there are any changes within the next two weeks, we will be submitting this document to our, uh, water and sewer rate consultant. Annually, they, uh, provide us with our future water and sewer, uh, rate increases and what they need to be in order for the city to cover the costs for these projects. And also tax rate projections. We have to also consider how will this impact the average citizen and their annual tax rate? So a lot of consideration is included in the, um, creation of the annual five-year CIP. Next slide. So for our CIP, the next steps, these are just a few highlighted steps. The city manager covered, uh, covered these, but I'm just going to touch on these, uh, very important dates. Today, we have the first budget work session, one of three work sessions with city council, where we today will present the five-year CIP and receive input from city council. At the end of today's meeting, we will be asking city council for your, uh, priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Not just CIP priorities, but regular budget priorities because we are, again, working on the regular budget, which is separate from the CIP. So we would like any feedback from city council today on your priorities for the upcoming fiscal year, twenty twenty-six. Second budget workshop is scheduled here at, uh, city hall and, and council chambers on June the eleventh. That's where we will discuss key budget items, uh, with, with the council. We'll have a third budget work session on July thirtieth. Uh, we will review the draft budget by July thirtieth. We should be probably eighty-five percent done with the city's annual budget. And we will have presentations by various departments. August nineteenth, the city manager will present the budget to city council. Uh, and also during that time, there are various resolutions that we will need city council to approve, such as receiving the, uh, proposed budget, CIP, setting public hearings for the tax rate, setting public hearings for the, uh, budget, um, as well as, um, well, as well as the CIP. And that's one of the things that I want to cover before I wrap up is that the citizens will have an opportunity to have, uh, a say in the CIP. We will, w- we are required to have a public hearing before council adopts the CIP. So that gives any citizen in Beaumont the opportunity to come to city hall, come to the, uh, come to the meeting, voice their concern or give any input before, uh, we ask the city council to vote on the CIP for the next five fiscal years. And then on September sixteenth, so that we are in compliance with the various state laws with regard to adopting an annual budget for the city, uh, we will hold the public hearings on that particular day. And that is the day scheduled for the adoption of the CIP and the adoption of the city's budget to fund the upcoming fiscal year, which begins October first. That is my last slide, I believe. What is the next slide, please? Yeah, that, that's my last slide. I'm open to any questions because next is when we get into the deep dive related to the various projects. As you can see on this screen, these are just a few of the projects that each director will come up today to, to discuss. These, all, all of these have been, uh, reviewed, uh, discussed among staff, planned, uh, by staff in terms of funding, in terms of, of, uh, the year that staff is proposing. But we do want feedback from city council on any of these projects. We have parks, we have recreation, we'll have facilities, uh, downtown projects, water projects, sewer projects, drainage and streets. So there will be, I didn't get the count of the total projects, but probably well over a hundred projects that each, uh, city department director will be covering, uh, today. And again, we, we look forward for, to any feedback from city council. But at this time, if you have any questions of me, I'm open for any, before we take the deep dive.
Councilman Turner?
First and foremost, I, I'm thankful all council members are here because this is one of the most important parts of how the city operates. So staff, is this video being recorded live?
Should be.
Okay, that's something I really want to make sure of. My second question is, what happens if four more council members decide to vote against the budget? You know, it states law, we got to have a budget. What happens if four more council members vote against a budget? It's important we communicate and participate right now because I need everybody to understand upfront what happens if we go against the budget.
Question is that? In my experience, the budget, existing budget just carries over until the next year, uh, that, the way that it's structured. Lego can come in there. I've been, I've been in this long. I've been in this longer, so laws change.
Yeah, so that would have been so if we had that provision in the charter, but that's not allowable. So if you don't adopt a budget, you have no operating money, so you can't spend any money.
So when you say no operating money, can you go a little bit in depth, how can that affect the city?
You can't pay anyone.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear.
You have to approve payroll. So you couldn't pay anyone, you couldn't, we pay lights, you couldn't pay your light, we could not pay our bills. You cannot. Any money that the city spends is approved and budgeted for, so you would not be able to spend any unbudgeted money.
So I just want to make it clear, during this budget process, we really need to participate versus doing it, doing something to this magnitude at the end, because these are the circumstances we can actually deal with.
Thank you, Councilman. And that is the purpose of these budget work sessions. Most cities have budget work sessions with their City Council to receive your input, really for transparency and to keep you updated on the process, so that we don't get to the end of the budget process, get to September, when we are required to adopt a budget and get adopted. So we want to be open, transparent, and provide as much information to the entire City Council between now and that September 16th date.
Councilman Hilliard?
When is it required for y'all to present the final budget to council? I know last year we had some issues of when it came, so what is the, how many days, 90 days, 30 days, till we, the council receive the final budget? Not two days before we're supposed to vote on it? When will we receive the final budget?
Based on the schedule, council is scheduled to receive the final budget on August 3rd, I believe.
We'll have plenty of time to review it. We won't get it and then three days later have to vote on it, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We'll get it to you to have plenty of time to review it. Then on, as I mentioned, August 19th, the city manager presents the budget to City Council. So you have up until, or the city has up until September 16th to make changes.
Yes, and it'll be a work in progress, and you get it on presentation on that August 16th. That's when the budget is presented, and then you have until October 1st to approve it. Last year wasn't a three-day process. We started it like this. We went months, we went months, and you had, and council had us every step of the way a part of that process, and they got it weeks before it was asked to be voted on.
Thank you. All right, let's continue.
All right, at this time, we'll start with parks, and we'll ask Mr. Kenneth Riggett to come up, discuss each one of these projects.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. First one that I have is the athletic complex for rehabilitation of the parking lots in Eaglebrook Drive. It's an ongoing project at $1,550,000, certificate of obligation bond. This project will mix and stabilize eight inches worth of base and overlay with two inches of asphalt pavement for the parking lots. Rehabilitation of the road repair, the rehabilitation of the road will repair the affected concrete panels, then mill and overlay the concrete with two inches of asphalt. The athletic complex contains four parking lots in Eaglebrook Drive. The asphalt pavement of the parking lots and roads have reached their lifespan and is in need of repair. Playground equipment and shade structures. It's new to the CIP, and it's also part of the Parks Master Plan. At a cost of $1,100,000, a general obligation bond, to replace or add playground equipment and shade structures to the following playgrounds identified in the Parks Master Plan. Hal Booty, Cottonwood, Fletcher Mini Park, Pearlstein, Roberts, Guzman, Colly's Ferry, and Magnolia. The project fulfills two projects identified in the Parks Master Plan each year to be put in. It's at a cost of $1,100,000. Community Park in Ward 1, it's upcoming, a general obligation bond, total cost of $4 million. Construct a new community park at a proposed location in Ward 1. Possible amenities for the park shall include walking paths, picnic shelters, restroom facilities, playground equipment, and a small splash pad. Once the site is selected for the park, design of amenities will follow. Community Park in the South End. At a total cost of $4 million, a general obligation bond, it's construct a new community park at proposed location in the south end of the city, possibly near the Theodore John Library. Possible amenities shall include picnic shelters, playground equipment, restroom facilities, and so forth. Once the site is selected, design and amenities will commence. Renovation of park restroom facilities, it's new to the CIP, a general obligation bond. This project will renovate approximately 20 park restrooms. The renovation will include painting the interior and exterior of each restroom, as well as upgrading fixtures such as commode, sinks, dryers, and things like that. This project would consist of upgrading approximately four restrooms per year for the next five years. Pool upgrades, Magnolia and Alice Keith. It's new to the CIP because we're incorporating both pools this time. At a total cost of $2,360,000, a certificate of obligation bond and general funds, operating funds. Magnolia Swimming Pool was built in 1968 while Alice Keith Pool was constructed in the 1990s. Both pools are crucial for outdoor activities for the youth of Beaumont and for the potential summer programs. Both pools are due for upgrades for modernization and addressing long-term maintenance deficiencies. The proposed upgrades would include the installation of additional ADA lifts, sanitary systems, depth markers, warning tiles, as well as the replacement of pool piping and pumps. Facility's maintenance has multiple maintenance projects scheduled for Magnolia Pool, but these are considered temporary fixes. New park signage, ongoing, but it's also new to the CIP. At a total cost of $222,000, certificate of obligation bonds. All of the parks will receive new signage due to the wear and tear. The city of Beaumont has rebranded the signage for the facilities and parks. New signs will be fabricated and installed in 39 parks. New branded signs have been installed in four parks already. The plan is to fabricate and install 10 signs each year. This is also part of the Parks Master Plan. New neighborhood park pavilions, it's ongoing, but also new to the CIP. At a total cost of $2,868,000, it's a general obligations bond. The project consists of constructing and installing new pavilions at all neighborhood parks. This plan is to build possibly two park pavilions per year, totaling 16 parks. Similar pavilions were put in at Rogers Park in 2024 and Sprout Park in 2025. It's also part of the Parks Master Plan. Splash pad renovations, ongoing, but also new to the CIP. At a total cost of $350,000, this is also part of the Parks Master Plan. This project consists of replacing the existing equipment with new, more reliable equipment. The work includes moving the equipment from underground to above ground, so the splash pad will stay there, it's just moving all of the mechanics, which we always have issues with, ongoing. Nine of the 10 existing splash pads are in need of repairs. Charlton Pollard Park, we lifted the equipment up, this is probably will be the second summer, and we've had very little issues with it. To facilitate these and future repairs, new equipment will be installed above ground, which will help us in the long run. Terror Park South Loop upgrades, new to the CIP. Proposed active amenities include multi-age playgrounds, sports courts, a splash pad, amphitheater. Proposed passive amenities include outdoor classroom areas, nature trails, natural playground spaces. Other amenities will include walking trail and a regulation-sized cricket field. This is part of the Parks Master Plan. Objective 1.4, to turn Terror Park basically into a regional destination. The concept plan focuses on the area south of a golf course. Colly's Ferry Park renovations is new to the CIP, a total cost of $450,000. This project includes replacing the existing gravel walking paths with a 10-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. Restrip the parking lot, repair parking bollards and cable fencing, and renovate restrooms. Colly's Ferry Park is identified as a regional park, and the above-listed maintenance is needed to maximize its potential. Babesahara's Complex parking expansion, it's new to the CIP, at a cost of $1.4 million. Proposed construction includes asphalt parking lots, parking and drainage, parking lot lighting, sidewalk connectivity to existing sidewalk trail in the park. It will add approximately 275 parking spaces to the park. Babesahara's Complex lacks needed parking for the extensive soccer games that are held there on most weekends. This project will expand off-street parking, increase the safety of park patrons who are currently parking either on the road, shoulders, or unpaved fields. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of just comments. I know, having been here a little bit of time, historically Beaumont as a city has not spent the average on what other cities spend on parks, and that's been a decision that's been made, but I think we're certainly starting to do a lot better, and I hope during the bond advisory meetings that these are brought up, because from in terms of playground equipment, but also just the quality of our parks, shade structures, being able to use them in the summer. And as I've visited other cities in Texas and across the nation, you know, quality of life is very important, and I think, you know, we certainly have challenges growing the city of Beaumont, and I believe one of those reasons, and there may, there's more than one, but is the quality of life. And I think investing in our parks is important, so I'm hoping this is being certainly considered through our general obligation advisory bond committee, so that we can begin to, and I appreciate this approach, because I think we're gonna, we need to understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to improve our parks.
We have some beautiful parks, but we do need some work done.
Councilman Williams and Councilwoman Sherwood.
Yeah, I mean, is it, to me, a lot of this is dictated upon the voter. I mean, it seems like roughly 80% of this is funded through GO bond?
Yes.
I mean, just for me, my concern, I mean, what if, what if they, I mean, voted no? I mean, that would be my concern. How do we pick and choose where we go on these projects then? Or how would these be broken out, I guess? Is there a priority within this list of items?
Well, next week, we have our third meeting with the Bond Advisory Committee, next Wednesday, and that's actually when they begin taking what they call a deep dive into these projects. Mr. Riggett will be presenting these projects, especially the ones that we're proposing as general obligation bond projects, to that committee next week. So they will have time between next week and August to prioritize those projects that they will bring back to City Council for recommendation for bond election. So we are engaging with the Bond Advisory Committee, beginning next week, it's parks and trails and recreation and facilities next week. A complete discussion on these projects, in particular, the ones highlighted in gold, because general obligation bonds are the ones that only the voters can vote on. And we as staff, we will make adjustments to the community investment plan as we get feedback from that committee.
And I'd just like to add, because that's a great question, and being here on council, I know one of the things that I examined over the last two years is this is no different than your household budget or your business budget. You've got X number of dollars, and you've got certain things you've got to do. You've got to pay your mortgage, you've got to pay your utilities, and then, once left over, then you get into, you know, parks. And historically, you know, we have a low tax rate. People complain about it, but compared to many other cities in Texas, our city tax rate's lower. So sometimes when people are comparing us to other cities, I always look at the other city's tax rate. And oftentimes, tax rates, ours is 65 cents. There's several cities that are 75 cents, 85 cents per hundred dollars. That gives them a lot more revenue. And so historically, you know, this council's been very, or the prior councils, you know, we've always concerned about tax rate, which I think is important, but as you continue to lower tax rates and don't look at it, it does leave your budget with less money. And so when people compare us to other cities, I just want to remind the new council people, look at those cities' budgets that they're comparing to, you know, in terms of their tax rates, because that becomes a problem for cities and the fact that we're not growing. But it is, but it just becomes how many dollars are available and what would be available for that.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
My question is more about kind of where we were headed, about how do we determine what projects are parks or equipment are repaired or replaced or fixed first, right? For me in particular, I'm getting calls about Ward 3 parks not being ready for summer, and that starts in about a week, school's going to be out, and I'm already getting constituents' calls about equipment or things that are broken, or this or that, or whatever the case may be. How are we going to determine which parks are going to get repaired, fixed, or new equipment first? Because Ward 3 needs it.
Well, I could tell you what's proposed in here, especially for the new playgrounds. Ward 3 makes up most of the playgrounds that will be new, as well as with the splash pad. We continuously have issues with our splash pads because of where the mechanics are located. And so all of that is the fix that's coming.
Yeah, a lot of repairs need to have been at particularly Ward 3 parks, for sure, and I want to make sure that I'm on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Crenshaw?
I'm all in support of things like upgrading, adding pavilions, and fixing equipment and things like that, but I'm reminded of, I believe it was at least three or four years ago, as prior to Mr. Williams coming in as our city manager, but remember the city went and spent a ridiculous amount of money upgrading signs, particularly here at City Hall and at other buildings, and I remember it was hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we spent to take what I thought were signs that looked fine, that were green, and made them a different color. And so I see $222,000 for signage, and having just spent nine days under a tin in Rogers Park, I can tell you that the sign at Rogers Park was fine. So is part of this $222,000 that y'all are going to replace the sign at Rogers Park?
We have several signs in multiple parks that have been damaged, damaged or faded from the sun in over years because they've been there for so long. Part of the master plan also tries to guide us toward basically branding our city and parks together. So that's more of a reason why changing out signs, but we can change signs as need be.
I got you. Branding sounds great and all that, you know, when we're, have a nice budget surplus, but you know, while the budget is tight, I would just hope that we would focus on getting existing equipment upgraded and safe and improving quality of life with things like shade and pavilions, but things like signage, I would hope that that is very, very low on our priority list, and $222,000 for signs, to me, just sounds pretty crazy. Thank you.
Councilman Durio?
Mr. Riggett, on the, what criteria are you going to use to decide what parks get those pavilions?
Well, right now, we have parks that do have some of the older structure pavilions, so we would go by which park needs it at the time, so that's how we would number it out as a need arises.
Also, I didn't hear you mention trails in your presentation. Did I miss that, or is it not in here?
Well, we have trails in some of the parks, like you knew, Ward 1 Park, we mentioned trails, as well as the park in the South End, we mentioned trails, or adding trails. Colly's Ferry, redoing the trail there.
Okay, all right. So you said, you mentioned you were moving the plumbing, I guess, for the splash pads above ground?
Yeah, over at Charlton Pollard Park, if you've been there recently. Yeah, over at Charlton Pollard Park, if you've been there recently, near the splash pad, you would see a large metal box outside of the splash pad. That's all of the mechanisms that were underground. We continuously had issues there, and with the grant from ExxonMobil, we were able to move out and put everything above ground. Since doing that, we've had very little repairs we had to go out there and do, except for vandalism. So the key thing that we need to do is really do that to all of the splash pads that we have, because every time we have a rain, we have an issue.
That was why I asked that question. Would it, will that be protected from vandalism? Would be fenced off or locked up or?
Well, it's in a metal box with a lock that you can't get into unless you really want to, but the damage that we had on Charlton Pollard's splash pad since then is, is the splash pad itself. They broke some of the features that are out there, and we had to have those repaired.
Yeah, also in your Parks Master Plan, you had mentioned boat launch for kayaking. Y'all have a, a location where y'all was trying to install that?
Well, as mentioned at Cagliari Ferry, proposed, Cagliari Ferry, as well as Terrell Park, as well as here at the Riverfront Park.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Hilliard.
Yeah, on these parks, are, are we going to take into account kids with disabilities? I know that's kind of a big deal with a lot of, especially at Rogers, that a lot of these, go ahead, a lot of these kids can't utilize the park equipment because it's not designed for kids with disabilities.
All future playgrounds take that into account, and that's what we aim to have everyone to be able to come out and enjoy the parks.
That's in this?
In our plan.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Turner.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing about the budget process, I, I'm kind of real big on data-driven decisions and looking at state averages and like-sized city averages, so I'll just give you a few scenarios from last year's budget to, from other cities compared to ours. Beaumont, we did about $600,000, that was our budget in parks. My first two years, it was $130,000, my first two years. That's just Beaumont. Bedford, Texas, $4 million in parks. Conroe, Texas, 1.8 million in parks. Missouri City, $7 million in parks. Waco, 7.5 million in parks. 10 years ago, it was smaller than Beaumont. And Tyler, Texas, which is almost identical, 3.1 million in parks. So just showing, you know, when we look at our budget, we got to really look at comparisons to like-sized cities and state averages. That's why I'm going to kind of be hammering down the whole entire budget. Are we looking at the state averages or is our budget in line with what the state is doing? I don't want to be too off from what the state averages are throughout the budget process.
Councilman Williams.
Do you know, I mean, I'm just curious, how did they fund, I mean, were they funding those through GOs, like the majority of this, or how did they fund it?
Yeah, so most, most cities, they do these bonds every three to four years. The issue with Beaumont, we haven't did it in over 40 years. So that was one of the reasons we start talking about these type of bonds when we travel. We actually go to these cities and they say, okay, this is how we get these projects done when the population isn't growing, or the tourism is kind of stabilized. So most cities do these forms of bonds. The second thing is, I think we can do a better job at sponsorship. When I say sponsorship, you have neighboring businesses that would be willing to invest in our parks. A prime example, I use Baptist Hospital as an example, that kind of tapped out at parking, and I'm more than confident they probably would extend parking for their patrons, but also let the city utilize it as well. And that's something we haven't done, Councilman Williams, but I think that's something we can do a better job of seeking out these sponsors.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Mr. Riget? Chris, sorry, Mr. Boone?
Mayor, just real quickly, I want to follow up on Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Turner's comments. One of the recommendations coming out of the Parks Plans was to explore the idea of a Friends of the Park, which we do not have. Cities like Tyler have Friends of the Park, which is a mechanism not only for volunteer opportunities, but also ability to raise money and help support parks. So that's one of the things we're looking at coming out of the Parks Plan.
Outstanding. Thank you, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Councilman Grinchall.
Can we talk about recreation? Was that part of your proposal? No, oh, my apologies, okay.
I have one more.
Councilman Hilliard.
And this is a big question, the $19 million, is that, how much is that going to be spent on the golf course? How much is going to be spent on Terrell Park?
That's separate from the golf course. This is just the south end of Terrell Park, behind the nature center.
Okay.
If you take a look at your Parks Master Plan, they have renderings and things like that that you can look at, or I can get them to you if you don't have it.
Just a point of clarification, we do spend more money on parks, council member. Also goes in operation, so it's more than $180,000. Exactly, total budget's about $6 million, too.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about pork improvements. The budget for pork improvements, you're right, not operations.
Okay, we're, we're on the same page, but just want to make sure, we're constantly having 60 employees in parks, so there's quite a bit of money spent there, for sure. Mayor, just housekeeping, I don't know if we told council about this book, it has a cut sheet on each project with the description, dollars, possible funding, objectives, everything. So, and when they're talking about a project, there is a sheet in your, in your book about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy Neal is next to discuss recreation.
Mr. Ellis, one question. Are any of these projects eligible for TERS funding?
Eligible for TERS. Right now, I'm saying no, and, and I'm only saying that because when we created the TERS Fund, when city council created the TERS Fund, there were, there were projects, you had to identify specific projects to be funded out of the TERS. Actually, and in that project listing, there was the athletic, the rehabilitation of the parking lot was one of the projects on this list, but I, I don't know all of the projects right offhand, but I know that one was included in the, in the project plan because you had to identify certain projects.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Duncan, can you find us a list of the TERS projects and we can let council know as we go through this discussion?
We ready?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everybody. So what you're going to see, the, the first thing that we're going to talk about is going to be the pickleball courts. Kenny Smith with Facilities is, he's the one that gets all the numbers, so when you see these numbers and see $731,000 or $721,000, don't bark at me about it. Kenny's the one that works the number side of it. So this project, the, the pickleball courts were actually in the CIP two years ago. It was initially the first year we do the, the engineering design, and then the next year, we, we go ahead and put the courts in. So in the initial project, a couple of years ago, it was only going to be four courts. So you see, and, and I'm glad Mr. Williams pointed out that everybody's got these sheets you can look at, so you see what we're kind of sharing with you as we speak up here. This, this is going to give us six courts. It's going to go in between the pro shop and the covered courts in that open area over to the side. We've already, working with the, the engineering firm, the architecture firm to, it really needs to be leveled off, they've got to improve the drainage, but you'll see that these six courts are going to go in, and as we know, even those of you that are new to council, you've heard the word pickleball plenty over the last couple of years, and you're going to continue to hear it. So this would be a real help and something the community definitely needs. So that is proposed to come out, would be 26 CIP, and that's going to be a CO. Next project we'll speak about, Councilman Durio, this has been something you've been really talking about the last few years, is Complex Four at the Athletic Complex, upgrading those three fields to make them fully synthetic turf. We talk about Ford Park. Ford Park is not city-owned, as we know. Ford Park has 12 fields. Essentially, you can only play baseball out there until the age of 12. They do have 13-year-olds that play on the 225-foot fences, but really, it's, it's kind of like playing racquetball. Those kids are hitting balls out of there like crazy. So Complex Four is larger. It would allow us the opportunity to host 13 through 16, potentially even into high school-age baseball tournaments. Obviously, during the week, we would still use them for our softball league, field rentals, anything else that we choose to do. It would be utilized the same way that it currently is, is for, like I said, our softball league and other rentals during the week, but this would be a huge upgrade. What you see on that slide is not our fields. That is just a rendering, that is from somewhere else, but that is essentially what it would look like, taking three fields, fully converting them to synthetic turf. You see the cost there, it's not cheap, but if you keep waiting, it's going to cost even more. So next project, we'll talk about the fitness court.
Can I ask somebody, you want me to wait till you do? Yeah, let's just wait till the end, if you don't mind.
All right.
Okay. Next project, we'll talk about the fitness court. You've heard me speak on it a few times before. The fitness court is about 1,000 square foot concrete, just pad. You can see it on the, on the slide that you have, it's got a wall. It can be done in, in any number of ways. This could be something we could do ourselves, but the reason that we're trying to partner with the National Fitness Campaign is that there's potential for a $50,000 grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, if we could apply for it. I feel confident that we would be able to get it, just depending upon the timing. When we put this in a couple of years ago, the, the cost of the court was about $150,000. It's gone up to $200,000. This would, however, be something that really kind of falls into with the Parks Master Plan and some of the other things, the Be Well Beaumont that we're now working with, the new, the new, what would we call it? Just a new plan that's, that's going to be a 10-year project for the city of Beaumont that's really stressing wellness, fitness. This gives us an opportunity to provide that at a location that we don't presently have. For the most part, if you want to work out, you got to go to a gym. There's, you can go outside and walk, you can ride bike, you can do those outside activities, but this would give you the opportunity to kind of program it a little bit. You could have people out there do, teaching some classes. A lot of cities, you can see on here that there's over 1,000 courts in, in the United States. Locally, I guess the closest one to us recently is in the city of Baytown. So it's, it's a great project. It's something that we've really been pushing for, and hopefully we can get approved, and that's going to come out of operating fund. And lastly, those of you who recall the, the, the presentation that took place about a month or so ago with the, the group that did a drainage study. So about three years ago, council approved $1.3 million to be spent in parks and recreation. Part of that proposal, or part of that, that project gave $125,000 to be spent for a drainage study. If you're a golfer, you know that Terrell Park, Henry Hummer Golf Course does not drain. If you live in the city of Beaumont, which you all do, and you drive out there, you know that for the most part, Terrell Park itself does not drain well. So we did this drainage study. This, the firm confirmed that it is arguably the flattest piece of property they've ever seen, that lots of work needs to be done. And what you see here is a $19.7 million proposal for fiscal year '28. There's also on another end, there's a $14.5 million proposal. So the 14.5 million, and I won't give you the entire presentation, I could go on for quite some time about it. The 14.5 is essentially taking the existing golf course and doing all the improvements with the grounds as is, raising up the fairways, crowning them better, giving better drainage runoffs, and Molly and her group could use better terms than I could, I'll, I'll use kind of basic drainage and runoff words. Also, our, our irrigation system is completely antiquated. The entire system needs to be redone. The, if, when we want to water tees, when we want to water greens, we have to get out there and physically show up, put the thing in the ground, turn it, let it run for 10 or 15 minutes, turn it off, go to the next location, boom, do the same thing. So it's, it's very time-consuming, it's very labor-intensive, it's very antiquated. Most golf courses at this stage, you can control this from a panel. A lot of them, you can control mobile from a phone even, so it's something that definitely needs to be done. If we want to keep this golf course moving forward, something needs to be done 100%. We, we're very grateful that council approved the initial study a couple of years back. We completed it this past spring, and it's, it's given us some great opportunities. The 19.7 is not taking the existing course and redoing it, it is a complete redesign. So it would give us, there's some great renderings of it. Those of you that, that have been on council, you got to see it at the presentation a couple of months ago. It, it's, it's an opportunity that if the money can come up, it would be incredible for, for the city. It would be a, a destination-type course that people would come and play from, from outside, as, as instead of our golfers leaving here and going to Lake Charles, or going to even Eagle Point, or going to Houston, or going north, people would, from those places would come here and play our golf course. It would be an incredible addition, and it's something that, obviously, I support it, I'm sent up here talking about it, but that is, that's all I've got in my presentation. So questions?
Councilman Durio.
On the softball or baseball fields, what type of, just for everybody here on council that's new, what type of revenue do those fields bring in as far as softball tournaments and baseball tournaments and stuff like that?
Well, it would be hard for me to tell you exactly what it's going to bring in because right now, we, we're not capitalizing on that. We're getting a few softball tournaments per year, but we're not getting the baseball tournaments. That would be some more projection-type things. I can tell you that in speaking with people that, that turfed their fields in the last 10 years, most of them, they've, they've recouped their money within, some of them within a year. Because, I mean, we know it doesn't get cold here very often, so lightning is going to keep you from playing, but rain pretty much is not going to keep you from playing. I guess Freddie's going to throw some numbers at it.
Yeah, I just calculated something. If we extended the length of the fields, we would be able to host 30 extra teams playing at the Athletic Complex, and what that means, it'll bring in about 900 people, about 250 rooms per weekend, and that equates to about $149,166 added to whatever team, a baseball tournament that will come to town.
That's, that's for that weekend?
For that, that particular weekend, it would add that much. Again, it would add that much revenue.
Okay, so this would make, this would pay for itself?
Uh huh, definitely.
And that doesn't include the rentals?
That's your hot tax as well?
That's the estimated economic impact overall. That includes entertainment, food, hotel, all of it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Neal, also, do y'all have any, I don't know, you said you didn't have any location, do you kind of got a guess of where you might want to put the fitness court?
Well, that's part of what the National Fitness Council does. They, they kind of, we work together and we sort of pick a few different locations. They're looking for foot traffic. That's a little bit tough in Beaumont because we know a lot of people drive everywhere. One of the locations that was considered was Central Park. There's consideration of doing something downtown. There's consideration maybe even over by Rotary Playground. There's, the last meeting that I had with them, they're, in their mind, they want to put three. They want to put three of them throughout the city, but we, we want to get one first and, and see what it does. But there, there's a lot of options, and it would be something that, there would be a lot of collaboration.
Okay, I think, one more question. Golf course, would it pay for itself?
That is something that, it's, I'm glad you asked that.
He stole all my questions.
It's, obviously, we would have to go up on our rates. We're not going to charge $32 to play a golf course that we're going to spend $19 million on. We would have to beef up staff, it's, it's innumerable changes. Innumerable, is that a word? Innumerable? It's a lot, a lot. There'd be a lot of changes. So would it pay for itself? Obviously, we would hope that it would. There's a, a potential study that we are looking into with the National Golf Foundation that is going to come in and kind of give us a really, give us an idea of whether we should do this or not. They're going to, they're going to put us up against other locations in the region, they're going to be able to do a full study, tell us if it's beneficial or not. They're not going to propose that we spend 15 to 18 million dollars, or to 19 million dollars if it looks like we're going to get an extra 2,000 golfers a year. So you've got to look at the region, you've got to look at the number of golfers, you've got to look at the number of people that travel through here, which we know is a large number. So that, that's a study that we're looking into presently.
And I'd just like to add, for purposes for people that are watching, this is under a general obligation bond suggestion, which the reason we're having the bond, that is something that the citizens would vote on and they would pay for. So the only additional cost would be any staff that would be required or additional equipment because the tax rate would cover the cost, if I'm not mistaken, and feel free to jump in, but there wouldn't be additional cost to our general revenue fund other than for the other than for the operations of it. And we currently have operations out at the golf course, so there might be new equipment needed or something. But otherwise, uh, that's just for a point of reference, for the ability to, the citizens would be paying for it through the general obligation bond as proposed, if they voted for that.
But one of the ideas that we have too is that we've, we've never charged citizens a different, different rate for a green fee than we do people that live outside of the city of Beaumont. Most municipal, most municipal golf courses do so. We would definitely be looking into doing so with, with this. We, we already do it at the tennis center. So it's something that, that's, that wouldn't be a precedent.
You, you're correct, Mayor. You know, they would pay for the construction costs. There would be some operations that might have to go into possible joint fund budget. But you can too sometimes include some dollars in, in GO, uh, uh, sales for operations for a year or two to, until the project you get going. So that's a thing you can do. I do with Jimmy. This one, golf courses typically don't pay for themselves, but they provide quite the quality of life thing for your community. You know, their costs to help offset it. But I guess in my experience, they haven't, they don't.
Thank you.
But they're great.
Councilman Hilliard, did you have a comment?
I'll agree with the manager, they are great. What, uh, what is the golf course presently do yearly cost? How much do y'all generate on people playing there now?
Well, right now, we, what we look at is rounds played. That's kind of the main thing that we try to base everything off of. Last year, I believe we had 24, 25,000 rounds that were played. Last month, we had 2,500. If you get 2,500 a month, you get 30,000 rounds. That's kind of always been our, our benchmark to try to hit that number. We've hit that number once in the last 12 years.
Okay.
Um, and really the difference with us is if it doesn't rain, people play golf in Humboldt. We've got a lot of loyalists out there, guys that love that place, just absolutely playing there. They, they love playing there. And if the, if, if it's dry, they play, they're out there. And we want to present a better, a better product for them. The last capital improvement we made out there was in 1998. We put in new greens. Those greens typically last anywhere from 16 to 20 years. We're sitting on 27 years right now. So even if we're unable to do these things, something's going to need to be done out there in the matter of capital spending, probably within the next two years. And that'll be something that we will propose if none of these other things are able to be passed through.
Okay, and my, my next one is on the, on these fitness courts, why not at the hike and bike trails? That's where we seem to have the most foot traffic.
Well, I think that would be something that, that we'd have to be able to discuss with the owners of the property.
It's DD6.
It's not our property. We mow, I believe it's a five foot strip on either side of those. A lot of people call them, they want, they want shade out there, they want trees to be planted. We can't, we can't build shade on something that's not ours. We can't plant trees on something that's not ours. Now, I will say that DD6 has always been very receptive to anything that we've done. But the initial hike and bike trail at Gulf Terrace, if you notice, there's a couple of little shade bench structures there. If you look at them, they're donated by the people that own the property or by the, the company that, that's kind of based out there.
And you know, on that same thought process, maybe it's something they can partner with us.
Maybe so.
To help absorb some of the cost.
Yeah, I think that would be a great option. I mean, if people are already out there working out, it would be a great option. Now, we would definitely have to increase parking. And that would be something else that we would have to look into, to be able to do that. You don't want to put a court out there and say, hey, come work out, and then go, but you can't park here.
Right.
So we, we'd want to definitely change that.
It's a better workout if you have to walk.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one way to look at it. I mean, I could, I need it.
Just playing. Councilman Turner, did you?
That's it. One, one thing, when I, when I first started this, I didn't understand some of the projects till I started kind of understanding how tourism plays a role into the money being spent in the city. Uh, right now, in the city of Beaumont, youth baseball is one of the top three things in tourism that brings revenue to the city. And when I say tourism, for lack of better terms, is they, they call it heads and beds. So 7% of the taxes go to the city, 6% go to the state, and 2% go to the county. So every time someone stays in a hotel, he makes a significant amount of revenue. And at first, that number with the baseball field seemed, sounded scarce to me. But right now, it's almost a baseball tournament in Beaumont every weekend. All our hotels are full with those kids playing baseball. So that money with baseball, it, it would come back pretty quickly and we'll probably make a, a lot more revenue off of it. So that's just something I just wanted to kind of point out. You know, I, I even thought with Terrell Park, I, I thought it was a joke when they said birding. Like people come stay in our hotels all the time to bird. And once I seen the numbers, I think it makes sense to keep investing revenue, it was bringing us a return on our investment.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
I mean, that kind of leads into what I wanted to ask. If, if we think that the fields are going to be revenue generating, why, why aren't we exploring some sort of revenue bond? Or, uh, you know, funding it that way rather than the GO bond? I mean, if we think it's gonna, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I think that people are traveling in, I'm just, uh, if it's a moneymaker and, and we know that people are coming in, wouldn't we fund it through a different route?
Revenue bonds are typically for water and wastewater related projects. And they're associated with the rates that customers pay on their monthly water and sewer bills. Those are not typically used for these types of projects.
Okay, so not with facilities or anything like that?
Well, and, and I think to add to it, you know, you're seeing certificate of obligations, which is where that would come from. But there is a capacity there because a part of our budget is generated to the interest in sinking. They, they were talking about, I believe, 16% of our budget. And so you, we only have so many dollars. So then it becomes, what are those CO projects? But again, that is things that this council will decide.
Okay.
Anyone else? Good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to follow up. Ms. Councilman Durya had a question about projects funded by TURS. We do have a list of, of some of those projects. The rehabilitation of the parking lots and Engelbreit Drive rehabilitation at the Athletic Complex. We put money in for 555 Main, you know, um, uh, that project extension to the, to the river. There was money to convert the Civic Center into a, a convention center as well. There were money for a couple of road rehabilitation projects. Jim Gilligan? Road rehabilitation, Holland Avenue Bridge replacement to be funded by the TURS. The transmission lines over in the Civic Center parking lot, that was to be funded using tax increment reinvestment zone funds as well. So those are, Lake District restroom facility improvements, those were the types of projects in the TURS.
TURS, have we received any money from the TURS yet?
We, we are supposed to receive our first tranche in Ju- July, so three months. We don't know yet. We receive those dollars from the tax office, the county tax office.
Councilman Hilliard?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So I have a question, and this is something that I talked about on the campaign trail. We have roughly 200 Airbnbs in the city that we don't charge any occupancy tax on. I mean, there's a potential for more tourism money or occupancy tax money that could, could be funneled into the city. Have we looked at that at all? And what about RV parks? You know, uh, there, people that stay in the hotels are paying an occupancy tax, but the people staying in these Airbnbs are not. And the, the people that are rolling these travel trailers in to work at our refineries are not. So I mean, it possibly could be one to $2 million additional funds from tourism. I guess would be basically what it would be, even though if they're working here, but it could be classified. But it's a way to generate more money for the city. And you know, maybe help with some of these and help with Tourism and Convention Bureau or, or whatever we need it for. So it's a, it's an avenue.
That's, that's a great comment. That's something that we can explore through work sessions in the future and get, get the data. And I, I do want to remind people, we're showing on here general obligation bond to be able to fund some of these. But again, this isn't necessarily what's going to be on the general obligation bond. We have a bond advisory committee that is meeting and they're going to make a recommendation to this council in August on what should be on the general obligation bond. So this is right now, staff proposals. So as council, I just want to remind people, because it can be confusing. We don't want to go out and say that's going to be on the general obligation bond. Because at this point, we don't know what's going to be on the, just for a point of clarity. Right, and how we would fund these, but you know, so.
Mayor, yeah, and it's good to hear from Councilman, Councilman Hilliard about possible revenue source. You know, part of this process is identifying new revenues. Other cities, they do collect on those Airbnbs, other cities, I was again, we collected on them. So, uh, it's good to know that there's interest on council and we can explore that and look at, at that, doing that.
Okay. So the Airbnbs, they do pay, the owners pay property tax though, right? But the occupants don't, they don't pay anything. Okay. What's, and, and Councilman Turner, you can probably refresh my memory, because remember, I'm the oldest guy on council now. What's the bill that we had that keeps the state's part of our hot tax for the next 10 years?
That's with the possible downtown hotel and convention center, House Bill 512.
All that has to be used on that. You can't use on anything but the hotel and convention center.
And it is limited to around that hotel, doesn't, it doesn't involve the whole city if I'm correct.
It's a possibility, it can extend out a certain amount of feet. It can impact surrounding businesses that could come back to the city.
Surround the hotel with a golf course.
Yes, 512 ties in with the possible hotel project. When we went to the state legislature and they approved that legislation, that those tax dollars could be used for that project. Now, we're currently working with the state legislature to get that 1,000 foot extension out into properties around it to be able, those taxes could go to, toward the project too.
All right. Next presentation?
The next presentation is by Mr. Kenny Smith, our Facilities Maintenance Director, to discuss facilities.
Page 24.
Morning, City Council, Mayor. Kenny Smith, Director of Facility Maintenance here. My first project is going to be the property located at 555 Main. That was the demolition of the property. It's being listed in the CIP because it was fund spent in 2025, which was a rollover cost of about 42,000. We end up paying the contractor some retainers fees, so that's why that's in the CIP. Um, our next project would be the Animal Care Services and Adoption Center. The current animal shelters, um, and adoption center was built in 1981, so about a little bit over 40 years old. It was a, um, building that was about 7,000 square feet, originally designed for animal holding for about three days. And today, the shelter operates as a 90% no kill facility with animals often, often have to be housed for over 45 days. So, um, the current facility has exceeded its current capacity and its, um, operational capabilities. So, um, our objective with the cost that's in the CIP was, 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 um, previously approved in the year before was to construct a 16,000 to 17,000 square foot, um, modern animal shelter and adoption center, which would be at a new location. The facility would provide adequate space for animal care facility, public adoption, additional parking, as well as increased visibility. This project has an estimated cost of around $6,975,000. It's proposed to begin in FY '26, which that would include land acquisition as well as design, and then construction in FY '27. The funding source is proposed as being a general obligation bond, but as you mentioned, nothing is final until we work through the, um, bond facilitation, bond facilitation group. So that's our first project. Moving on to our next project, which is the restroom facility at Riverfront Park. This is the only new project that's under facilities this year. And that would be to construct a new multi-use, uh, men's and women's restroom down here at the new Riverfront Park. Currently, it doesn't have a restroom. The estimated cost with that would be 445,550. The project is estimated or proposed to begin in FY '28 as, um, design and then construction in FY '29. Um, the funding source currently is through certificates of obligation. Um, our next project would be the restroom facility at Athletic Complex Number Three. This was also approved in a previous CIP. This would be the demolition, the demolition and replacement of the current restroom facility at Athletic Complex Number Three. A new facility would, would include sidewalk plumbing, fencing, electrical upgrades. An estimated cost with, with this is also 445,550. The project is proposed to begin in FY '28 for design and then construction in 2029. And, um, the funding source would also be certificates of obligation. Um, the next project on the list would be the airport, the large clear span hangar. Just the description of this project would be the construction of a 12,000 square foot hangar, which will help meet the jet, the jet demand at the airport. This would expand the airport revenue and capacity for private aircraft. As of right now, they state that they have a, um, a waiting list for jets for about 30, 30 jets. And, um, the estimated cost for this project would be $2,450,000. And this would be estimated, the project to start in FY '27 with design and then construction in FY '28. And, um, this project would most likely be grant funded. Airport, they have a 90/10 split, where grants will cover 90% of the cost and then 10% will be covered by the airport. And the reason it's listed in the CIP is because the funding has to be identified. It's typically a reimbursement type fund, so the, the money has to be allocated by the city and then it will be reimbursed by a tax out grant. Next project we have up is the Collius Ferry Boat Ramp and, um, pier rehabilitation. It was identified by Collins Engineering that the boat ramp and timber pier were in critical condition. Repair and replacement of the ramps and structure to ensure long-term safety and functional is recommended. The estimated cost is, um, $470,000. The project is proposed to start FY '26 with, um, design and possibly construction in that same year and then extend out to FY '27. The funding source was through certificates of obligation. Let's see, our next project is, um, new fire station number four. Proposed, this would involve the construction of a modern fire station to replace the current existing fire station number four, which is, uh, would be in a nearby location. Fire Station Four was built in 1954, so it's about 70 years old. A new station would include a pool through Apparatus Bay, separate dormitories for men and women, dedicated space for decontamination of their equipment, turnout gear, and then also additional space for EMS storage and ample parking. This total estimated cost for this fire station four would be $5,495,000. The estimated, um, proposed year for design would be in FY '28. And then, uh, following year would be construction FY '29. And FY '28, we would also have to acquire the land to build this fire station. And as of right now, we have it down as possible being, um, GO, general obligation bond. Next project we have up is the food truck park. So this is the development of a downtown food truck park with amenities that would include possible, um, pavilions, bandstands, electrical water sewer hookups, public restrooms, um, commissary. The reason that we have this listed in the CIP is because, um, it was previously approved in the prior CIP. The estimated cost we have now is $1,320,700. Obviously, we're currently working on, well, the RFP has been submitted over to purchasing. So we hope to get that advertised out for the P3, the Public Private Partnership, before the end of June. So we should be getting some information, um, back on, hopefully some investors that would be willing to invest. But, um, this was, this was allocated or budgeted, um, previously, so that's why it's in the CIP right now. We had, um, allocation of 43,000 for design for this year, which we haven't spent yet because we're doing the RFP. And then we just have the, the cost that's in there for next year for, for construction. And this cost was based on the downtown Nature's River location, just in case, you know, we don't get any, um, responding to the RFP and council decides that they still want to move forward with this project. All right, our next project here is the Lake District Restroom. And this is going to be the construction of a new restroom for the Centennial Park Lake District, close to their event center. Obviously, the objective would be to support family recreation in the event center. Obviously, the objective will be to support family recreation in the event center, lakeside center. Estimated cost for this restroom is $800,000. The project's start year is proposed for FY26 for design and then construction the following year in FY27. The funding source currently is on certificates of obligation. The next project, Riverfront Park Restoration. This is a project that fell up under Public Works, but obviously it was a restoration of the Riverfront Park shoreline that had to be shorted for damages caused by Harvey. The objective of this project was to stabilize the shoreline and enhance the park with pedestrian pathways, landscaping to make it nice again. The estimated cost is about 20 million. The project is ongoing. I think it's going to be wrapping up pretty soon. It's very done with it. It's done. Sorry about that. All right, and moving on to our next project, which is the nested tea hanger at the airport. This is a 10, 10-unit hanger. It would be for 10 unit hangars for small aircraft. This would also help reduce the 30 plane waitlist that we have at the airport currently. Obviously, this is going to boost aircraft storage and support airport leasing. It also helps with the increase of fuel cells by demonstrating our continued airport growth to support the future tax dot grant opportunities. The estimated cost for this 10-unit hanger is $3,025,000. And this will be proposed for design for FY27. And then construction will be the following year FY28. This is also will be grant funded with a 90-10 split. Tax dot grants will be covering about 90% of the cost and then the city will cover 10%. Once again, this is identified in the CIP because the city has to, it's going to be a reimbursement type of grant. So we have to have the dollars allocated so we can pay it out and then get reimbursed. And my next project on the list is the municipal transit roof. At the municipal transit building, the roof system is past its useful life. So we need to replace that roof because it's in pretty bad shape. The estimated cost for that is $830,400. We estimate to begin construction and design would be next year FY27. Just spoke with Director Angman. She said it's possibly some grant opportunities hopefully. So maybe they put it out and we'll be able to get some grant funding. But as of right now, the funding source is through certificates of obligation. And the next couple of projects, they're considered to be projects that are in future consideration. So possibly out past the five-year mark that's typically in the CIP. And that's beginning with the water park. And the water park, it would be the construction of a major water park featuring a lazy river splash, splash features, locker rooms, wading pool, picnic shelter, things of that sort. This was a project that was originally called out in the strategic plan as being, as being a top priority. It was previously approved in a, in a, in a prior CIP. But as staff, we kind of moved it away from 2028, 2029 to as to future considerations because we think that it would probably be best to focus on the current pools, upgrading and renovating those pools because they really are in desperate need of renovation and that's Alice Keefe and Magnolia. The estimated cost is a little bit over 10 million. And the reason we got those estimated costs was kind of based on the cost of Pirate Bay and Baytown. And this will be a project that would be potentially considered as a general obligation bond for the funding source. Our next project, the Police Department Headquarters. Existing police headquarters at 255 Collie Street was built in 1974. So this is a building that's over 50 years old. It's definitely reached past its life expectancy. It's outdated, undersized, and it currently doesn't meet the needs of the police, policemen and policewomen there. It was originally designed for about 130 personnel. Now it pretty much supports over 320 personnel as of right now. So the project objectives would be to construct a new state of our police facility that would address spatial constraints, support operational efficiency, meet modern day standards for safety, technology, community engagement. As of right now, the facility is about 59,000 square feet. The new facility would be approximately over 100,000 square feet and will be hopefully located in an area yet to be, yet to be determined. The estimated cost of this facility would be $59,720,000. And as of right now, it's undetermined. We look forward to building this facility. And the reason that it's being listed because it was listed in the Beaumont Vision 2030 Plan. And our next and last one on my list is the City Hall complex. So this was also something that was called out in the Beaumont 2035 Vision Plan. And it would be a modern city hall in downtown Beaumont. Designs include Civic Plaza, you know, kind of to create a town square type of look with amenities and shops around it. And that's going to also be helped to use to support the long-term downtown revitalization of Beaumont. The estimated cost for this facility would be 56,500,000. Again, it's to be determined when this will be designed or constructed. But again, the cost estimates here, they're pretty much preliminary cost estimates. These are not the final costs. In order to get cost on some of these projects, we have to sit down with a design professional, do community outreach, talk to the different departments and see exactly what their needs is. And hopefully eventually get a facility master plan so we can actually do facility condition assessments on these buildings and then have a plan on how we plan on replacing them and doing long-term planning. And the funding source for the new police headquarters, city hall, and also the water park would be hopefully through general obligation debt. And those are all the projects that I have. Anyone have any questions?
Excellent presentation. Councilman Hilliard, then Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
So, and, and this may be, Chief White can maybe answer this too, but is there a state law that says we have to have so many fire stations within so many, so many areas? Or I mean, is it possible to consolidate? And have, you know, instead of having so many, is there a way to consolidate to where they can be rezoned as far as the areas that they cover?
The stations that we have affect our ISO rating with overlap coverage. Moving Station Four would be within its district, which affects response times and coverage for those neighborhoods.
Okay, okay.
We're currently ISO rated number two.
Out of a scale of?
10.
Oh, okay. Two being good?
Two being good.
Okay, all right.
10 being bad.
Okay. And then another question I have is the, is the food truck park. What are we going to do about flooding? It's going to, my, my understanding is going to be built right there on Riverfront Park, correct? So, and also is the, port is going to be doing some construction on the bridge there. How will that affect, affect the food truck park? And can the food truck park maybe?
Councilman, I know that's been discussed, but that hadn't been decided. That would be a part of a future council decision. So, but I know you have heard that, but that has not, you know, there's other options and we're looking at a public-private partnership that might reduce the cost. They might want to provide a location. So there's, I think we're, that's part of the RFP.
That's correct. It's a part of RFP that the location is to be determined. We have listed two potential locations, that being one, another one being over at near Centennial Park. And then we also open it up to additional city-owned property.
Okay. And then my last question is on the, the airport hangars that were built. What is our, what do we make? What does the city make off the rental of these hangars? And how much additional funds will come in if these are built?
Mr. Mo's here. Do you have information? He's the airport director.
Tea hangers, they're $2.95 a month. And the box hangars are based on square footage of the aircraft. The other part is the fuel cells. That's the bigger piece of that equation. The more aircraft you have, the more fuel cells, especially the larger aircraft. We get a little bit more profit off of that. And so the more large aircraft we have in for the big, large hangars, the fuel cells go up. And of course, we bring also the businesses that come in that, as y'all talked about before, that soft dollar that comes through the hotels, all that. So there's a lot of business coming in, so we have a lot of that traffic.
Okay, okay, perfect. So that, that would be a money-making, it would be able to pay for itself.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, you'd look at the amortization schedule on the hangars and work the back engineer that cost into it. Basically, it'll cover its costs. The profit dollars come from the fuel cells. That are associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Yeah, Mr. Mo, I just wanted to highlight that, that 90% text dot grant, you know, like, yeah, that, that's pretty important to kind of speak upon.
Yeah, and that's, it's not a for everything. So there's an IAJA grant that has come into play, which is an infrastructure grant through Text Dot. All, for those that aren't familiar, all of the FAA dollars come through Text Dot because we're a block grant state and then come down through to the airport. So Text Dot gets to decide where those dollars go. And we're currently at a 90-10 split for two of the grants, NPE and IAJA. So we try and utilize those dollars as much as we can and, you know, capture that so we can grow, but, you know, less cost us.
And Mayor, my second thing was just thank you with the, the food truck part. That's what I was going to speak upon because it's kind of out for RFP and just a clear explanation. I don't want people to be confused about that food truck part. So I appreciate you clarifying that.
Sure. Yeah.
You're always skipping over me, man.
I've been keeping time and you've talked the most.
Notice, notice Public Works and the parks are doing work at Collier's Ferry. Is that two different projects or are y'all working together on that or what?
Yeah, they are two different projects. We're going to be specifically focused on the dock there. So I know they're working on the trails and some of the, more of the park amenities. We're going to be working on the, on the dock and pier there.
And also, and Chief White can speak to this. Station 10 on Washington Boulevard is old as me. And it really does need replacing. Of course, I spent most of my career there, so I got a special place in my heart for it. But it's a really old station. It's been flooded before. It has asbestos in it. They have done abatement and all kind of stuff.
The, the abatement's been done on both engine, Station 10 and Station 8. They're sister stations. They were constructed in 1963. Station 4 is currently our oldest fire station. The next, the oldest fire station is Station 7, which is our only two-story station.
But that's like a historic deal. That's over there in the.
Historical district. My preference would be next step to replace Station 8 and Station 10 because they were, again, both sister stations constructed in 1963, but they both had, had asbestos abatement. They both have been upgraded to have an air vac system to remove diesel exhaust fluids. That's part of our plan. And we just finished with Station 14 with an air vac system, getting rid of carcinogens in the station. But that would be next on the list down the line in a capital project, Station 10 and Station 8.
Okay, you said it's built in 63?
Both stations, they're sister stations built in 1963.
So I'm actually a year older than you.
A year older, yes. But you're still going, much like the stations.
Ooh, good. Good. My only comment is I'm, I'm certainly excited also to see about the Animal Care Services and Adoption Center. We get a lot of calls and certainly people love their pets and concerned about the animals. And being able to expand those facilities would help our animal care, Beaumont Animal Care, who do, I think, a tremendous job, meeting the everyday needs of our city. And it's a challenging job. So, thank you.
I agree.
Anybody else? All right.
Thank you all.
I, I think after this next presentation, we'll go ahead and take a recess. But if we can go ahead and have one more presentation, and we will have much in the first floor conference room.
Next presentation is Ms. Christina Loke to discuss downtown projects.
Ms. Gina, if you'll start with the next slide.
I kind of expect.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to just say that tourism is economic development. And in today's economy, development that doesn't generate revenue isn't development at all. In 2024, visitor spending in Beaumont reached 391 million, an 8% increase over the previous year. Shout out to Freddie Willard and the Convention and Visitors Bureau team for helping lead that success. But more than a celebration of past growth, this is a signpost for our future because the money is in tourism. And economic development is all about generating revenue. The more we reinvest in smart strategic growth, the more we earn and the more we can reinvest in our neighborhoods, our streets and our people. The FY 2026 CIP downtown projects reflect that philosophy. And these aren't just capital projects. They're economic drivers grounded in the long-term vision of our strategic plan. Just as a reminder for our strategic plan, goal one, great place to live. Objective three, expand recreational and leisure options for all. Objective four, develop Beaumont as a sports tourist destination. Goal three, vibrant downtown slash riverfront. Objective three, have a downtown hotel and conference center. Objective five, have a more attractive and inviting downtown. As you can see to the graph on the right, there you can see the $391.9 million in visitor spending for 2024. And think about it, that's with our current hotel inventory and we all know what that's like. More importantly, consider the investments that the city has made in not just activating CVB, but in marketing dollars and the power of the hotel occupancy tax that y'all just discussed, 15% of which, 6% goes to the state. It's a reminder to think about that as we continue on with these slides. Now, if you wouldn't mind going back just one. So we are going to start with the very first project. City Hall Courtyard and Plaza renovation. Now this stayed exactly the same from the last CIP, just pushed one year back as we continue to discuss the hotel operations. Now for FY26 and FY28, the total will be $1.19 million. This reimagines the plaza just to the left with a walkable space that links City Hall to the riverfront. It's going to enhance civic identity and set the stage for future event programming. The next one is the Civic Center renovation. Currently, we have budgeted for FY26 and FY27, an initial cost of $300,000 for projected renderings. And the following year will be $24,660,000. It's exciting to discuss this because again, these funding may not increase the actual facade. This is truly just to bring the Civic Center back to code. And we have to understand that the Civic Center was dated back to 1978. And for many of you who know, with all the events we've been there, there's only one restroom downstairs. So understand that the cost that's allocated here is quite high, but still just to determine the Civic Center into a convention center. And a convention center is the key word to the HB 5012 Qualified Hotel Project that allows us to get back the 6% hotel occupancy tax from the state to pay off the debt for the hotel project. Finally, we have the River Park Extension, and this one I'm really excited about. For FY27, it would be $693,000 for renderings. FY28 is $9.937 million. And this expands the existing Riverfront Park, yes, Molly, so excited, it's finally complete, with a new green space, an amphitheater, a splash pad and a park, improved trail systems. It's built for visitors but made for residents. And this one will be a beautiful addition to our park system, adding seamless connectivity to the main Riverfront Park and potential downtown hotel location. We have a new Riverfront Walkway from City Hall Plaza. And we have to understand that currently, right now, the only way to get to Riverfront Park is underneath the railroad bridge from City Hall. Unfortunately, due to this, coming from the Civic Center, there are many, many stairs and it may not necessarily be ADA compliant. So what we're proposing is that we correct it to be an ADA compliant route and more importantly, enable strollers and families to be able to enjoy the area of downtown and make their way to Riverfront Park. In it, we have invested FY27 $84,000 in rendering and for FY28 $1.2 million in the actual construction. Finally, we have a Riverfront Pedestrian Bridge. Now this is planned. Now, this is planned for the future and it's a bridge spanning the railroad to connect the future hotel and convention center project. We strategically placed this into the C I P because we were actively watching Senate Bill fifteen fifty five that was just passed on May thirteenth, establishing a Texas administered grant program to fund railroad grade separation projects, including pedestrian bridges and support public safety and economic development by financing these overpasses with only a secured ten percent of nonstate funding. It's very important that we keep our eyes on this bill because this could be potential funding for our later slated projects. And finally, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm hoping these five are worth forty million. Tina, if you could go to the next two slides.
Page forty five.
I'd like to introduce you to potential renderings of the Downtown Recreation Center. Now, before I get into the funding, I'd like to first show off the strategic location. Next slide, please. Currently, we have seen the impact of the Downtown Event Center. We know how far it's being booked out and we all get to enjoy the amenities of being lakeside. And just adjacent to that is a wonderful great lawn. It's a little over ten acres. And how beautiful would it be to see this as a new recreation center? Last year, there was a recreation center into the C I P. There's no secret of that. And while it was determined to be in a specific ward, the idea here is that the strategic plan clearly states an increase in leisure activities for all and not just one ward. And we have to remember that downtown is for all of our wards and downtown is a place for all of us, especially when it's located three blocks from the actual bus station in downtown and multiple bus stops that are currently in downtown as we see. So we've a lot for the amenity of transportation. And if we go to the next slide, the proposed rendering, we're going to go one more, just keep showing prettiness. There's going to be a potential rock wall. Obviously, it may not be come to tuition, but it does look pretty and it was exciting to put. But in the next slide, we're going to showcase oh, basketball and indoor courts. We got to remember our strategic plan and the idea of a sports tourist destination. So if you go one more slide, Ms. Tina, thank you. What's so great is that we are talking six basketball courts. This is just a potential rendering. I'm going to repeat. More importantly, is an esports. If you haven't or are not familiar with Legends and Bryan College Station, it's incredible because not only does it serve as an esports for the weekend, but during the week, it allows for residents to be able to utilize a computer with Wi Fi access for minimal funding of maybe five dollars an hour. What's even better is the fact that local agencies are able to promote and secure funding for students to be able to enjoy for free. And that's something that would be huge and catalytic if if able to aspire. If you go one more slide, you'll be able to see that there were not just talking basketball here. We've got eight, six basketball courts that can be converted to twelve volleyball courts and eighteen pickleball courts. Also, it has the ability to serve as a banker room with fifteen hundred estimated guests. I love to showcase this idea because not only will it anchor downtown tourism and boost overnight stays, but it's designed for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, esports, gymnastics, cheer, baton twirling and so much more. All of this is going to generate revenue through tournaments, memberships and rentals, but at the same time, offer our community citywide leagues and access to recreational events, just like we discussed. Finally, I'd just like to say that while there are not actual feasibility numbers discussed here, there will be a full fledged report given on June twenty fifth to the Bond Committee when this project is discussed by the sports facilities, a third party vendor that does this all across the country. And lastly, the very last project on the downtown plan is going to be the underground power line relocation. Currently, it's slated at three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars for F Y twenty six and for four million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for F Y twenty seven. This just moves key overhead utilities underground to enhance aesthetics and reliability. And huge shout out to Paul Blackburn because not only has he been an advocate for the hotel project, more importantly, there's other ways that energy has been able to identify that they're not only going to help support this hotel project, but they're going to be able to bring us business as well. And I would encourage all of you to discuss that with him. Finally, if I could just end with this. This plan is intentional. It reflects the values of our residents and the direction of City Council, and it addresses quality of life. These investments are expected to generate new revenue streams through tourism events and downtown vibrancy. More importantly, I'd like you to remember this. Beaumont's strategic plan outlines a clear destination, a vibrant downtown and riverfront anchored by a hotel and convention center, supported by recreation and entertainment and positioned as a premier sports tourism destination. I'd like for all of you to remember that.
There'll be a test later. Any questions? Councilman Turner?
Often when we roll out Bo Vision, one of the first things we are met with is the question of how we're going to pay for it. Can you kind of speak to some ways that something as big as a sports complex, again, with tourism, with baseball, we see the trend was working for the city of Beaumont. But can you speak to ways that that can be financed or possible ways that could be paid for?
Yeah, so first of all, this plan is engineered by this administration. And not only has this administration done a key catalyst in looking forward to the opportunities downtown, they're also looking at new revenue sources. Currently, we're in talks with the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. There is a potential additional two percent in a venue tax and a one point five percent in a T P I D, a Tourism Public Improvement District. You will be able to hear a lot more about that in the coming months. And then more importantly, you know, I think I'd have to ask just a little bit more education when it comes to the bond and our tax rates that you've all discussed up here. You know, if I were to ask everyone in this room, who would rather pay what they're paying in taxes, in property taxes today in the city of Beaumont and what they're paying in two thousand eighteen? Many people would think I'd rather pay for two thousand eighteen because McDonald's was ninety nine cents back then and, you know, music was a little bit better. But more importantly, it's really because the fact that in two thousand eighteen, we were paying seventy one cents. So if everyone in this room would have agreed to have paid for what was in the property taxes in two thousand eighteen today, that's very close to an eighty to eighty five million dollar bond. And we've all got to really understand and think about what that means. This city may not have been shown of progressive growth, but that's because at the same time, we weren't investing back in our city. We were continually decreasing our tax rates. And so as we look at this bond election, and for those of you who are not following the Bond Committee, we're talking ten dollars a month. If ten dollars a month can bring us a hundred and fifty seven million dollar bond, then I know I'm willing not to go to Starbucks once a month. And and that's the kind of talks that we need to be having and supporting what this administration is doing.
I wouldn't say that Starbucks is ten dollars a day, so you know, you're just saving that in one day.
And just my second one was the railroad. I I love the fact of the ADA compliant interest in the bridge possibly in the future going over it. And I just want to stress, you know, if you don't have a vision or you don't have somewhat of a plan, you can't see where you're going. So I'm thankful a lot of these projects save future consideration and and I'm hopeful that we are doing a good job explaining it, getting ahead of it and communicating with the railroad because I know how complex it can be sometimes when dealing with them. So I appreciate the presentation and just you making example of ten dollars a day. I I know for a fact, I I go to Starbucks almost five times a week, so I can definitely sacrifice that as well.
If we can just target a couple of different people for more than the ten dollars. Yes, Councilman Williams and then Assistant City Manager Bean.
On the Civic Civic Center renovation, I mean, is that tied to the hotel? I mean, is that something you wouldn't want to do if there's no hotel? Is it only feasible with a hotel? I mean, the restrooms are an issue. I agree with you.
So the specifications in House Bill fifty twelve and what we've already lobbied for, so it's already in effect, is for a qualified hotel project to specifically be within a thousand feet or within, so it could be connected, of a convention center, specifically a convention center with breakout rooms. And unfortunately, in the light of this children's museum many years back coming in, those conference rooms and breakout rooms were no longer in existence. At the same time, just being completely honest, when you look at the Civic Center, there is a lot of love and and care, and especially in the kitchen. And I mean, I know you've had several events there to see some of the events. And Emily Wheeler is is also here who could attest to the state and condition of the Civic Center.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, Councilmember Williams, that could be either our situation too. Because that could, if the hotel's done, that could be a possible conference center with it, so so.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I mean, because there's obviously some upgrades needed. I just didn't know if it was only in tandem with the hotel or if it would some something that would be looked at without as well.
I've got two.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Don't forget about Chris. Don't forget about Chris, man. Don't forget about Chris.
To Councilman Hilliard, then Councilman Durio, then I'll come to you. Councilwoman Sherwood, and then I'll get to Assistant City Manager.
So my question is, is, I mean, could it be an ExxonMobil Riverfront Park? Could it be a Doggett Recreation Center? You know, we sought out corporate sponsorship as a way to help fund these projects where we don't have to pick up the full blunt of it. I mean, it's a possibility.
A thousand percent. So when Stonehenge was initially hired on, the very first thing they did was discuss with stakeholders. And to be fair, I can tell you personally, I've developed a lot of relationships with them. People are invested in this project because they currently need this project. If Baptist Hospital came up here right now, they would tell you how much they need this project, right? And including with ExxonMobil and so many others. But I think more importantly, the real idea right now is, is that this is the first time this plan is being proposed to you. There's three parts of this downtown plan that is going to work with each other. We've got the hotel, the Convention Center, and now this Recreation Center. And so there is a huge part to play for ExxonMobil, one thousand percent, and Energy and Baptist and San Elizabeth and L I T and Lamar University. But again, it all starts with every one of you and the decisions that you make for us moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Count. Councilman Durya.
And I like the new Recreation Center in the downtown area. And if we're able to get that, then that mean we're going to need two Recreation Centers because we're going to still need one in Ward Four.
I knew you were going to say that, but I also know, I also know what some of these numbers are starting to look like and I can't wait for you to see it because we're not just talking about investment into the hotel. We're talking about money spent here. I mean, think of every one of you who've gone to these tournaments because of your kids. I mean, whether they play baseball or basketball or volleyball or, I mean, you're just, you're traveling everywhere and you're looking for places like this to stay and and there's not many that have this many courts.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
I just wanted to add that if y'all do something in Ward Four, y'all definitely will be doing something in Ward Three, which this is Ward Three, but I mean, north and south. And nevertheless, I just appreciate your energy. That's what I was going to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're getting the big win with the record.
Yeah, it's your award.
Of your energy.
Only in Ward Three, yes, sir.
Go for it.
Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, ma'am, real quickly and just following up on maybe the question, Councilman Williams. As as Christina mentioned, there are kind of three, three relevant parts here. We've mentioned the hotel, the Convention Center conversion, and then this new bigger, larger Recreation Center. And so those are all kind of connected along with some of these other projects. I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight into some timing because I know the Bond Commission has been brought up. Within a month, Christina mentioned Stonehenge, that's our hotel consultant. They will be presenting to council their findings that council contracted with them to do the research on for their proposal. So within a month, council is going to hear from them. And about a week later, the Bond Committee is going to hear the proposals for downtown projects, which is a lot of what Christina has covered here this morning. And so I just want to kind of give you that, just at least looking forward to the next two, these kind of key points where decisions will have to start really be made in terms of how we can eventually settle out with the C I P eventually. But I just wanted to mention that.
Councilman Williams.
I mean, there's talks of ten dollars a month. I'm just, what would ten dollars a month look like? What, how much money would that, just rough estimate, what would that turn into?
It is one fifty seven. And if you go to the Beaumont Bonds. I'm sorry, one fifty seven million. Let me add the million part. That's the most important. The best part is, is that if anyone and anyone watching this live goes to Beaumont Bonds dot com and you go to the schedule, it just says schedule, it tells you all the next meetings that anyone is welcome to attend. But more importantly, at the very bottom, you can click on to previous presentations. And if you click on the last presentation, you'll be able to see not only what ten dollars generates, but even twenty dollars generates. And that's really exciting stuff because I think that's two days of Starbucks as you.
I was going to say, how many days of Starbucks do we need to cut then for for Vision thirty, twenty thirty five? I mean, just what is the total estimated?
That would be a decision by the vote?
No, I mean, what is the total expected cost of, I mean, is this, it's a hundred million dollars on just the development now?
Well, let's just talk about the C I P because that's what you're looking at right now. Currently on the C I P, it's eighty eight point three million dollars worth of just downtown projects. Okay, I'm not speaking on the others, but at least the projects that I have showcased so far is eighty eight point three million. And while that doesn't include necessarily the hotel and convention center, we also have to understand timing of everything. And we're going, and hopefully with the hotel bond committee and with y'all getting more information from Stonehenge, we'll be able to understand a little bit more about what that timing looks like. Because they're all going to funnel each other, right? People are going to come and stay at the hotel if they have a tournament. People are going to come and stay at a hotel if they don't have a tournament. And then when they come and stay at the hotel, they get to hear about this really cool Recreation Center and then they want to come back, right? So that's the goal is that they're all going to support each other. And that's the best part about this is that your decision will lead lead that direction.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, just real quickly, just to follow up on that, the Vision twenty thirty five is a big, bold, multi decade plan. So you'll notice as you look in the C I P, as you hear discussions in the bonds, there's a lot of elements on that big, bold, long, distant, long vision plan that are not in either.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got, I'm sorry. This bond, that proposal that may happen in November, there may be, so as I understand it, we haven't had this in forty years.
Forty seven.
Forty seven. So most cities do this, what, every?
Three to five.
Three to five. So if you're saying over a decade or whatever, there may be another bond proposal in five years. So it doesn't all have to be done at one time, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just my last. I'm sorry. We got one time to do this. I'm gonna do it. I I noticed you said Civic Center nineteen seventy eight and I seen the dollar amount, almost twenty five million dollars. What, what, what happens if the upgrades are higher than new construction? Like, could that be a possibility?
I mean, again, I think the most important part is, you know, the facade, right? You've got a building, I mean, we're looking at it and while it's great and all its muster and it's lasted so long, the whole idea is the future, right? And this new generations that are coming in to take video and showcase the grandiose, right? It's just all about the looks. And so I think it's really difficult to look at investing this much money and not making the money count because you want to make it look like it's a new property, right? You want that investment. So if you're going to spend all this money, do you fix the car that may not necessarily, you know, drive in five years? Or do you really, do you invest in a new one? And then I think that's going to be a really difficult conversation, but one that's going to need to be had because the future is ours. And that riverfront, I mean, if anyone has a time during the break or after this to go look at Riverfront Park, you forget the river is there. And that's the goal of this entire plan is for us to enhance upon the Nature's River that is directly off, one mile off of Interstate Ten. And our city is positioned perfectly located in between all of that. I mean, we we are positioned, we have to position ourselves in the same way that we are positioned in this state.
Well, great point, Councilman. And I know through talking to people through various networks that I've gotten to get a part of, one of the things that gets pointed out is when you build, if if you weren't able to execute the hotel and you renovate just the inside of that, you've got a brand new car sitting next to a forty year old car. And it, you know, you know, aesthetics matter when people come. So I think that is something that will be looked at in the future. So that was a great, great presentation. And we're going to recess here in just a minute. Could we get a projection, just so everybody on council can know how many presentations will follow after this? Because an idea of time where in a perfect world, we would end here at one P M, but.
Yeah, so after this presentation, we have streets, drainage, water and sewer. Water and sewer will take the longest. And I was thinking a few minutes ago, if we can condense water and sewer. I was going to ask. I was gonna ask Molly during the break somehow condense it, because they will take, all four of those will probably take another two to three hours. So if council would. She said Mike is a chatterbox. If he can, you know, but, but that is something we, we can, we can discuss if we can. Water and sewer have a lot of projects. If there's a way we can group them and maybe summarize them, or ask council if you have questions about specific ones, we can go that route.
And if we're able to maintain a quorum, we can consider extending it as well to get the information. And, and with the bond advisory, I was able to attend the second one, wasn't able to attend the first one. And you can, I believe they're recorded, so you can watch them later, but it, it does provide a lot of detail on those bond advisory committees. But with that, we'll be recessed for, let's attempt to be back here by, yeah, noon, twelve o'clock. So twenty-six minutes, we'll set a record here if we do that. So.
Need to do roll call?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I'm on top of the game.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Here.
And Councilmember Crenshaw absent.
All right, can we continue with the presentations, please?
Yes, Mayor, we will be continuing with Ms. Molly Villarreal, Public Works Director, and she's going to cover the water projects. And she's going to summarize the project. She's not going to go through each one for the sake of time. But if there are some specific projects you want her to cover, she will be more than happy.
I'm already getting applause. I love it. I know. Okay, so one of the questions that Councilman Durio asked earlier, I just wanted to... My back of the napkin total of all the projects that we are covering today is 147 for all the project worksheets that are in here, in the project books. Not 147 water projects, no. Of those, we have 43. So you're looking at the top part of the list of page 47. And so I'm going to kind of lump these projects as best as I can together. And really what our CIP represents is, of course, Hurricane Harvey in 2017 exposed a lot of issues in our water production and water conveyance systems. And so subsequent to that, we were eligible for a lot of grant funding, primarily through FEMA, some Water Development Board projects, also to the condition assessments. So we engaged a consulting engineer who performed an evaluation of our water production system and gave us like a 10, 15-year list of projects to identify. So all of the critical projects have been addressed up to this point, or they're being wrapped up. After that now, we're kind of working into... So those were like the red light, stop, you got to do this work. So now we're kind of more in the yellow zone on certain projects. And I can point out specifically which ones those are as well. So we'll begin with the first, one, two, three, four, five projects. And these are our annual ongoing projects that we do. The dead-end flushing, water production system repairs, water line replacement, and transmission line rehabilitation. So these are every year, these are projects that are for assets that are going to have in excess of a 20-year service life. So they qualify for this community investment program. Oh, and also neglected to point it out, the majority of our projects are funded either through the revenue bonds or grants. You won't see until on the next slide when we get there, some projects that will be eligible for GO bond funding. So after the annual projects, then we start getting into the next group. So when you see Buns Canal or Lawson's Canal projects, those are our conveyance systems that are delivering water from the Nature's River to the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant over there right near I-10. So the Buns Canal Improvements Project is going to go into design in 2026, expect construction in 2027. Hurricane Harvey has made impacts to it, plus a lot of the other significant floods. So we're really primarily going to restore the channel to its original cross-section and add a screen to capture all the vegetation. I do want to point out then the raw water pump station, this $30 million project is for FY '25. It is scheduled to finish this fiscal year. And this is the large pump station project at Colliers Ferry Park. So we should be wrapping, God willing, wrapping that up here this fiscal year. Very much looking forward to it. There is a partner project to it further down the list, a Pine Street Raw Water Line, Raw Water Delivery Line for $23 million. This is another grant-funded project as part of the Raw Water Pump Station. So the pump station will be ready, but we can't put it into service until the Raw Water Delivery Line is constructed. And that is that 48-inch water line that we're constructing down Pine Street. So those two projects are connected. So once the raw water line is able to be put into service, we can turn on the new pump station at Colliers Ferry Park. Subsequent to that, then we can take Lawson's Pump Station out of service and do all the necessary repairs that need to happen to that. So after that, another important group of projects is our lead and copper programs, for lack of a better term. So the federal government, the EPA mandated that all lead service lines must be inventoried. Then subsequent to that, we had to also inventory, basically had to inventory all the material pipes. So we're looking for lead lines, which we have found exceedingly few, thank goodness, but also to galvanize lines. Because if you're not able to verify that the galvanized line was never downstream, excuse me, of a lead line, then you must replace the galvanized lines as well. So these two projects, one is the field investigation, the next is the actual service line replacement, are a combination. So you see the two colors associated with each of those projects. And that is because there's revenue bonds and grants associated with those two projects. Also back to Lawson's Pump Station, there's an embankment repairs that need to be made. The shoreline along Colliers Ferry Park was stabilized after Hurricane Ike. And now the portion in front of the actual pump station itself needs to be stabilized. And that is what that project is there. We have transmission line inspections. We have two lines that come from our groundwater production facility in Harden County that convey water to the north end
Need to do roll call? That's what I thought. I'm on top of the game.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw absent.
All right, can we continue with the presentations, please?
Yes, Mayor, we will be continuing with Ms. Molly Villarreal, Public Works Director, and she's gonna cover the water projects, and she's gonna summarize the project. She's not gonna go through each one for the sake of time and but if there are some specific projects you want her to cover, she will be more than happy.
I'm already getting applause, I love it. I know. Okay, so one of the questions that Councilman Duryo asked earlier, I just wanted to, my back of the napkin total of all the projects that we are covering today is 147 for all the project worksheets that are in here, in the project books. Not 147 water projects, no. Of those, we have 43. So you're looking at the top part of the list of page 47. And so I'm going to kind of lump these projects as best as I can together. And really what our CIP represents is, of course, Hurricane Harvey in 2017 exposed a lot of issues in our water production and water conveyance systems. And so subsequent to that, we were eligible for a lot of grant funding, primarily through FEMA, some Water Development Board projects, also to the condition assessments. So we engaged a consulting engineer who performed an evaluation of our water production system and gave us like a 10, 15-year list of projects to identify. So all of the critical projects have been addressed up to this point, or they're being wrapped up. After that now, we're kind of working into, so those were like the, you know, the red light, stop, you gotta do this work. So now we're kind of more in the yellow zone on certain projects. And I can point out specifically which ones those are as well. So we'll begin with the first, one, two, three, four, five projects. And these are our annual ongoing projects that we do. The dead-end flushing, water production system repairs, water line replacement, and transmission line rehabilitation. So these are, every year, these are projects that are, you know, for assets that are gonna have in excess of a 20-year service life, so they qualify for this community investment program. Oh, and also neglected to point it out, the majority of our projects are funded either through the revenue bonds or grants. You won't see until on the next slide, when we get there, some projects that will be eligible for GO bond funding. So after the annual projects, then we start getting into the next group. So when you see Buns Canal or Lawson's Canal projects, those are our conveyance systems that are delivering water from the Nature's River to the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant over there, right near I-10. So the Buns Canal Improvements Project is gonna go into design in 2026, expect construction in 2027. Hurricane Harvey has impact, made impacts to it, plus a lot of the other significant floods. So we're really primarily going to restore the channel to its original cross-section and add a screen to capture all the vegetation. I do want to point out then, the raw water pump station, this $30 million project, is for FY '25. It is scheduled to finish this fiscal year. And this is the large pump station project at Colliers Ferry Park. So we should be wrapping, God willing, wrapping that up here this fiscal year. Very, very much looking forward to it. There is a partner project to it further down the list, a Pine Street Raw Water Line, Raw Water Delivery Line for $23 million. This is another grant-funded project as part of the Raw Water Pump Station. So the pump station will be ready, but we can't put it into service until the Raw Water Delivery Line is constructed. And that is that 48-inch water line that we're constructing down Pine Street. So those two projects are connected. So once that, once the raw water line is able to be put into service, we can turn on the new pump station at Colliers Ferry Park. Subsequent to that, then we can take Lawson's Pump Station out of service and do all the necessary repairs that need to happen to that. So after that, another important group of projects is our lead and copper programs, for lack of a better term. So the federal government, the EPA mandated that all lead service lines must be inventoried. Then subsequent to that, we had to also inventory, basically had to inventory all the material pipes. So we're looking for lead lines, which we have found exceedingly few, thank goodness, but also to galvanized lines, because we, if you're not able to verify that the galvanized line is, was never downstream, excuse me, of a lead line, then you must replace the galvanized lines as well. So it's, these two projects, one is the field investigation, the next is the actual service line replacement, are a combination. So you see the two colors associated with each of those projects. And that is because there's revenue bonds and grants associated with those two projects. Also back to Lawson's Pump Station, there's an embankment repairs that need to be made. The shoreline along Colliers Ferry Park was stabilized after Hurricane Ike. And now the portion in front of the actual pump station itself needs to be stabilized. And that is what that project is there. We have transmission line inspections. We have two lines that come from our groundwater production facility in Hardin County that convey water to the north end of our system. And we will be performing, and this is ongoing, our inspections of the pipes. These are internal inspections using specialized equipment to perform that. The Orange Avenue Water Main Rehabilitation, you know, railroads are always in the news with us. We have a large diameter water line that crosses five rails on Orange Avenue. And this project, which is currently advertised for bid, will replace that section of water line that is made out of cast iron, ductile iron, has had a series of leaks, and it's very difficult to deal with the railroad. So this line, this project will replace that section of line. Then you'll see several projects, Pine Street Resiliency Line. That is a line that, once the raw water delivery line goes into place, we will construct, we plan to construct this Resiliency Line. Part of our investigation after Hurricane Harvey identified that we need another line to leave the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant and connect to the distribution system. And once these other major projects are completed, that's when we plan to kick off this Resiliency Line. Subsequent to that, there are some waterline projects on the next page that will allow us to take these other large lines that have been in service since the day they were constructed, take them out of service, inspect them, and possibly then replace them. So we are considering for future, we have those sectioned out, projected out in our timeline. So you'll see those later in this list. So the Pine Street Water Production Plant Projects, there is a series of them. The only new one out of this is the Administration Building renovation. So the Administration Building is, originally began construction in the 20s, and then had an expansion in 1949. So due to this extensive age, the, there's a lot of finishes that need to be replaced. There's ductwork that needs to be repaired, asbestos that needs to be abated. Didn't know that asbestos could be used to glaze a window, but here we are. And so this project encompasses that long list of repairs to make sure that this is a safe working place for our water plant operators. This facility is manned 24 hours a day. This is our shelter during a storm, so for our water production personnel. And so this, this project will greatly improve their ability to perform their duties. The Chemical Improvements Project is complete, and the final closeout documentation will be presented to council at the next meeting. An important one I want to point out is our chlorine dioxide injection project. So for those not familiar, we have had a series of issues with discolored water in our distribution system. And we engaged a consultant who specializes in water issues. And they recommended that we change our current disinfection from using chlorine gas to chlorine dioxide. And it's a whole different setup. And that is under, that project is ongoing. It's a long lead time for the equipment to be delivered. But it is scheduled to be completed at the end of this calendar year. And so once we do this conversion over to the chlorine dioxide, it will allow the iron and manganese to be precipitated out of this, out of the water from the Nature's River before it goes to the distribution system. So currently, right now, we sequester the water, the iron and manganese, and it can accumulate in our pipes. And then you get a leak, or you, a valve gets closed, or there's a fire. The water, the steady state of the water system can be disrupted, causing the discolored water. And so there's gonna be, subsequent to our project going in and continuing to flush out the iron and manganese from the system, we first have to stop adding iron and manganese into the water. God bless you. So that is an important project. We have had our eye on it for quite some time and look forward to that being completed. There's other improvements to the water plant, generator improvements, SCADA control improvements, South Dresen vein drain. So then there are our storage tanks. We have engaged, when Bart and I came to Public Works and Water Production, we implemented a routine cycle of cleaning and rehabilitating our elevated storage tanks. So that's why you see these stair steps into the future. The one that is about to go to advertise for bid is South Tank, which is south of Washington Boulevard on Harriet Street. And then after that is our Northwest Tank, which is the one on East Lucas, fiscal year '27. And then there's storage tanks in Hardin County that are Loeb, Steel Tank, our Loeb Ground Storage Tank, and then also the Dishman Elevated Storage Tank. So all of these are scheduled, these are rehabilitations. These are not the routine bi-annual cleanings that we do. So we inspect all our tanks annually, we get reports on that. And, but now we're able to stage our future rehabilitations. As I mentioned, these Pine Street Water Line Replacements, one, two, three, and four, will be subsequent to the Resiliency Line being constructed. Future, we're getting close to the future projects now, is more improvements at the water production plant, more storage tank rehabilitation, adding an additional pipeline under the Nature's River to support our, give us redundancy in the water that we get from the Nature's River to our Pine Street Water Treatment Plant. And then there's some future projects that are also to enhance and improve service at the water production plant. So then we have what we identify as our Water for Street Projects. So the Texton I-10 project, it projects have water and sewer components as well. These are reimbursement programs. And so these, but it is a reimbursement. So we end up having to pay for the contractor to do their work. And it could be anywhere from 90 to 180 days before we get our reimbursements back. So that has to, the account has to be identified, and that is in our, through our water revenue funds. And so those totals have been adjusted for the current pricing that we have from the contractors. And then the next three projects have been identified for potential future roads that would be extended. One is the Dowling Extension. And it's broken into two phases, for clarity's sake, right now. And this is from College all the way to I-10. And then the Point Parkway North Extension, which would connect Northwest Parkway to Highway 105. So those are set out for future. It's possible that this work would also be eligible for general obligation bonds if the voters decide to move forward with constructing those roads. If there is any questions?
That's not the roads, that's the
This is just the water portion. Just the water, water infrastructure. Michael, present the sewer infrastructure.
Yeah. Any questions? Councilman Turner?
I know we're just talking about the, the water portion, but I just got a council, I got a question from Councilmember Hilliard, and I kind of want to kind of explain it. You know, right now in Beaumont, it's clear that we're growing the most in the west end. And I think we don't really have, we ran out of room on Dowling. You see, it's blown up, so, you know, it's kind of showing that it's potentially a possibility that we need to probably expand in that direction, which is in your ward. Just wanted to explain it.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Duryo?
I know, this is just for the piping portion. You, last I heard us talk about, they said that's a, the total project is like $35 million project. Is that correct, when you extend Dowling all the way to Interstate 10?
Yeah, once we total everything up, and I can, I don't have it totaled in my brain at the moment, but I can get that number total for you.
All right. Excellent.
See y'all in a bit.
Mr. Harris, Mike Harris, Water, Waste Water Utilities Director.
Right, good afternoon. I was told I couldn't be chatty, so I'll try to keep it brief. I did want to say, Councilman Duryo, man, I was feeling bad for you when it's comparing your age to the fire stations. So just to make you feel better, you're way younger than some of our infrastructure. Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, so basically, I'm gonna be talking about the wastewater projects. And in the sake of time, I've kind of lumped them up into some, some different categories that we could go over. Of course, the first two that's on the list, they're our annual projects that we do every year. It's the amount of money we spend every year. And I think what's important for council to know, like the Annual Collection System Renewal, this is where the pipe bursting or the sewer main replacement comes in. This is where we do our sewer evaluation work, the televising, the camera in the lines, the cleaning the lines, smoke testing, things of that nature. Like I said, this all comes under that Annual Collection System Renewal. The Annual Lift Station Repairs and Improvements, that's what we use to keep our lift stations on major issues, pumps, things of that nature. If it's a major repair, $50,000 or more, it'll come out of the CIP line item here. The next thing, just to touch on, is like the downtown sewer improvements, Harriet Street Lift Station, the lift station electrical improvements, all the lift station, the permanent generators, that's a new project. I'm gonna come back and discuss the new projects in a minute. Wall Avenue C Lift Station Rehabilitation and the Florida Avenue Interceptor. The things about these projects here, these are the projects that are out in the collection system. These are the projects that improve the collection system and helps the citizens be able to flush during the rains. Like I said, I know that's a big issue, a big deal. So these are the projects that we're doing out in the system to improve the system as a whole. Just a little Sewer 101, your system is hooked into a gravity, it's gravity-fed. The lines come from the houses into a gravity main, and the gravity main goes to these lift stations. And basically, the lift station is designed to pump it either from the north to the south to another lift station, or straight to the wastewater plant. So like I said, the lift stations are pretty valuable in the sense that that's what moves the water out of our collection system all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. This Harriet Street Lift Station, or it's a, it's old lift station, it's outdated, the controls are outdated. It's a pretty much a total restore of this station. And same thing with the Wall and Avenue C Lift Station. The only difference between the two, the Harriet Lift Station's getting a new wet well, new control room, everything. Where Wall and Avenue C, they're just getting an upgrade on the electrical control room, new pumps and things of that nature, but they're still gonna use the same wet well that's in place. Let's see. The, the other stuff that's on here is more stuff that's happened at the wastewater treatment plant itself. One thing to highlight is the wastewater treatment plant generator and electrical improvements. If you remember back in 2023, we had a fire at our RS building, burnt some of the electrical controls up. The main cause that we come up with is because these electrical controls are in such a hazardous environment with the sewer gases. And it causes a lot of corrosion, corrosion on the electrical connections and lines. So this project, it's been ongoing since then. We're actually building a new electrical control room that's out of that building, out of that environment. And like I said, it's been ongoing, and we're moving on pretty good with it. One of the other things to point out on as far as the wastewater plant is the Pond 3 Rehabilitation. And I think there's a Pond 2 Rehabilitation. Yeah, it's on here on the next page. But these are ponds that we use to help with our treatment process. It works as far as we eliminate the ammonia at the treatment plant. So these ponds are gonna need to be actually cleaned out, sludge removed, and new aerators put in. We have Pond 3 slated for 2027. And I think Pond 2 is for future considerations. Yes, ma'am.
So lift stations and flushing and raining is a big deal in Ward 3. I need some more clarity on. So how many lift stations are, I guess, in and around? Are they all over the city, or are they more concentrated in certain areas, or how does it work?
We have 77 lift stations all over the city.
Okay.
Ward 3, thinking right off the top of my head, without just sitting going through them all, I think we have about eight lift stations. One of the major ones is Primer, which is over off of Primer and oh, what's that street? Monty, come on. Yeah, I know, I'm trying to think of the street that runs Primer, Astor, that area, there's, we have a lift station there.
Okay, my question also is, are certain lift stations in need of more repair than other lift stations? Have we identified those, and how are we prioritizing which lift stations or pump stations are being handled first, or what?
We have older lift stations, and we have some of the lift stations that have been in the past that's been rehabbed already. So we always try to take the older lift stations, prioritize them, and updating them. One of the examples I can give is this, the electrical, lift station's electrical improvements. It's three smaller lift stations, but the electrical controls in them, the technology is outdated. So we've actually come in and changed out the electrical controls in it to a more modern, more tech, you know, more technical advanced control system in it. So like I said, we do try to tackle the older ones first.
Councilman Hilliard?
Penetrating. That's what's causing the toilets not to flush.
Sure, right.
And so what we need to do is do smoke testing to find out where our leaks are. I mean, and that's the only way we're gonna know. You could put in 100 lift stations, but it's the, it's the rainwater that's penetrating the pipes, which is causing the problems. And so we need to do smoke tests, so we can find and generally locate the, the areas that are of, of most concern, I would believe.
Yes, sir, I agree with you 100%. And that's what the Annual Collection System Renewal, it does come to that.
Because we also have a problem in my ward with people flushing when it rains and it coming up in their bathtubs, or their neighbors flushing, it's coming up in the next-door neighbor's bathtubs, and so.
Smoke testing is one of the tools in the tool chest to evaluate the sanitary sewer system. There was a wastewater Collection System Master Plan that was performed by LAN. Since, as the, as the master plan was being produced, we were able to identify some major sources of inflow. And notice, I don't even say infiltration, just inflow. And so the master plan does need to be recalibrated because of these repairs having been made. Smoke testing can capture the largest area of, you get the most miles, most feet per dollar with the smoke testing. But there's, we're also going to, we're talking to a consultant to help us. We're adopting and onboarding right now an asset management software to help us to manage all of the data collection that we've done over the last several years of our sewer evaluation reports of all of the TVing, smoke testing, and records that we have. And in addition to that, talking to this other consultant that specializes in that type of work, so that we can make sure that we're not investigating the same location twice as well.
Right.
As well as talking to another consultant that specializes in performing optimization studies of these lift stations to make sure that we are operating our current infrastructure as well as it can be. So we're constantly looking at all that. And so most all of those tasks will fall under the Annual Collection System Renewal.
Okay. And, and I have another question.
Okay. And, and I have another question and I, I mean, this is something that we as a council can look at later, but there's a lot of people that have hooked their gutter systems and their pool systems illegally up to the wastewater, up to the sewage without the city's knowledge. And I mean, I think it's something that we should address as a council. Part of someone buying a new home that some type of test is done to make sure that these people haven't illegally hooked their, their systems up to the, the sewer. Uh, am, am I correct in that? I, I know you probably run into that a lot. Uh, recently before the election, there was a, a lady that, uh, my predecessor had, uh, uh, broadcast on Facebook about her sewage being prominent. It turned out to be that she had illegally hooked her, her system up to the wastewater and caused all the problem in the, in the, in the very beginning. So is that something that maybe we can look at as a council and as a city that, that we can make sure that our citizens are, are following the guidelines and they're not illegally hooking up to our wastewater system?
As we find those, as Mike's crews, uh, uncover those or as they were uncovered during the master plan, they are required to disconnect, uh, their system, but, you know, I've walked in several backyards in, in your ward and have, you know, stepped into sewer cavities where their yard lines are, you know, still wide open. So they're not connected to the gutter, but they are collecting the rainwater.
Which is causing branches and trees and pine needles and everything that shouldn't go into the sewer line. And that is, can also be a major hazard and cause a lot of the problems that we're dealing with.
One of the things, just kind of piggyback on what Molly said about that, the thing you gotta think about, if we're out replacing the sewer main, say it's a concrete main that was put in the ground in nineteen fifty and the mains deteriorated beyond, you know, its life.
Right.
We replace our sewer main, we put new taps in, but all the service lines at the houses that are on private, they've been in the ground since nineteen fifty as well.
Yes.
And like I said, they're just as deteriorated as our, as our main is, you know, but yet as the water department, we really have no jurisdiction over what, you know, what the city, uh, what citizen has.
I'm aware that I, I bought my house and had to replace all my lines too.
I, I know at one time it's been said that, uh, the EPA, uh, estimates about forty percent of all the inflow comes from private service lines.
Okay.
So. Thanks, Molly. Anytime.
Thank you.
How would you do it? So, uh, just wanted to kind of jump back to some of the, uh, future plans that we're looking at. Uh, some of the, the wastewater activated plant or wastewater treatment plant activated sludge phase one. Uh, of course, y'all know we have, uh, the wetlands there, Cattle Marsh. Uh, Cattle Marsh is part of our treatment process. Uh, as we treat the wastewater through our plant and it goes through the entire treatment process, one of the last things it does, it goes through all the cells at Cattle Marsh to remove the ammonia out of the water. I mean, that's the main purpose of it. Uh, by having an act, uh, this activated sludge plant, it would remove the ammonia actually before it gets to Cattle Marsh. It would almost make Cattle Marsh, uh, not necessary for sewer treatment. So that's one of the things that we're looking at in the future. Uh, the chlorine treatment plant, chlorine contract chamber walls. Uh, it's cinder block walls, it's where our chlorine, we add our chlorine to it and it's got to have a certain amount of detention time. And it basically runs through channels. Uh, the cinder block walls, they're getting a little, little aged. So we put that in there in the future that we may end up having to do something with it a little later on. The drying beds rehabilitation, we have just redone four drying beds within the last couple of years. Uh, these four drying beds, they're holding up good for us, but we're looking in the future where we may want to, uh, add some more drying beds and rehab some. And also it talked about the wastewater treatment plant pond number two rehabilitation. Same thing we had talked about with pond, uh, three, going through there, pumping it out, cleaning the sludge out, reshaping the bottom, put new aerators in. And, uh, finally one we talked about is wetland improvements. Uh, it's a new project, uh, new project that just come on this year. Uh, we may end up having to go through and redo some of the cells, replant them with the bull rush, reshape them because we did see a lot of channeling in the cells back in twenty-three when we had the drought and the water levels really dropped after, uh, so we really need to eliminate that channeling. A lot of this is going to also depend on, uh, we're currently in the middle of the, uh, wastewater treatment plant master plan. And once we find our findings on that master plan, it would definitely give us a good direction on which way to go. Uh, that's kind of hit some of the highlights. Uh, I think some of the things that are probably really important to the council. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a comment, just to kind of piggyback off what Councilman Hilliard and Councilman, Councilwoman Sherwood said. I'm just gonna be a little bit more specific. The Jeffersons area, Charles and Paul area and Amelia area. And when I say the Jeffersons, you know which family.
You're talking about, uh, Lufkin Street?
Yes, that's the area I just want a little TLC on.
Sure, sure. Well, you're currently in that area working, so.
Yes, Councilman Williams.
Do we have enough lift stations? I mean, are, are?
I mean, the thing we think, I, I think about it like this, okay? Every day, every average day that there's no heavy rains, the system works fine, you know? We get stoppages, but it's usually paper stoppages, grease, things of that nature. The only issues that you see where we have citizens that can't flush is during heavy rain events. And it's because of the inflow of the rainwater getting into our system. It inundates the system, the lift stations cannot move the water out of the system fast enough, you know? But like I said, as far as saying, no, we need more lift stations or, or something like that, you know, we, the system works fine. You know, during normal, average days, even heavy days, it works fine. It's just, it's just these heavy, heavy rain days is when we see the issues. And it seems like sometimes we have more heavy rain days than others, you know?
One thing that we may not have the answers today, but something to investigate, I know for future, as you were pointing out earlier with the, uh, our sewer lines, when they get replaced, it's usually the homes have, many of them may have them that same age.
Sure.
Uh, in terms of how other cities are age, because there's homeowners out there that don't have the funds to replace those. And, uh, you know, so we can know of the water intrusion and it can be a thirty percent problem, but it, the city doesn't pay for people's individual lines. And I'm just curious on how other cities that have aged and that's occurred, surely we're not the first and how they dealt with it. And perhaps that's something we can investigate to see if there's been any cities that have come up with good solutions for that. Because that's going to be an ongoing problem because, you know, we can't, homeowners don't have the money. City can't pay for things on private property, so.
And, and like I say, I add to this, you know, about the problem with the INI, the inflow and the infiltration. It's not a problem that's just isolated in Beaumont. Every city with a sewer system has the same problem. Uh, I mean, I worked at this city not far from here, uh, for a couple of years and their system's relatively twenty-five years old, thirty years old, relatively new. That same problem with INI, just like, you know, we do. So like I said, it's not, it's, it's not isolated to just Beaumont. It's a, it's, it's a system, I mean, a problem with any system that you run into.
Councilman Turner.
And, and lastly, uh, for Mr. Manager, again, we, we have a fairly over fifty percent of a new council. Even with pipe bursting, can we get the new council member some of that information of how much money and what we already done a lot of this pipe bursting and smoke testing that? I think it's important for them to see like the strides and what we've done financially towards that.
Yeah, I, I might be good for us to have a workshop where we just workshop that item when you get that direct information about your areas and wards and the projects that are taking place specifically to help those particular areas that you're talking about and we can discuss it.
Thank you. Did a lot less than we did.
I, I do want to mention one thing right quick about the, the wastewater, uh, especially, uh, Councilwoman Sherwood's area. Uh, we have been working with the, uh, Bloomberg Harvard, uh, data track stuff and we've got some interesting stuff coming up over in the north end that we're going to be looking into, so.
And, and I just want to state, that's a great report. And also I understand what Councilman Hilliard said, but I can speak to the fact that it has improved greatly over the last two years. Uh, we still have a long ways to go and we're probably always, but, but you're right. I mean, but I, it is reassuring to me that the work they're doing is having an impact because people even call me afterwards and saying, hey, it's fixed, I'm so happy. And, you know, people celebrate that, that have had problems.
I could say, uh, Councilman Hilliard, whenever I started at Operations Manager at Water Utilities, uh, the first heavy rain we got, I had over eighty sewer calls and I was scratching my head, wondering what I got myself into. Uh, today, when we have heavy rains, we may end up around thirty. So we're, we've made a difference, but it's still just, you know, there's still a lot of work to do.
For those thirty, it's a big deal.
Because that was one of the main things that when I knock on the door, they grab me and say, I want my toilets to flush.
Sure.
And so I said, we're gonna do everything we can.
Uh, and I want the toilets to flush too.
We all want to.
I didn't promise anything. I said I'm, I didn't make any promises.
I appreciate you and I appreciate your presentation and I hope people are watching. I may be making snippets of this to air so that, just so that people can know that we're working and we're not negating to address certain issues or certain areas of town or certain projects are underway because that matters.
It does.
All right. Councilman Durio.
And I might have missed this, but you said that the reason that the toilets don't flush in heavy rain is because of the inflow. Rainwater inflow into the system. And, and it's get, it's caused by holes in the pipes, the inflow? Separations in the pipes. Is that something you correct when you do the pipe bursting? Correct. We're putting, actually installing new mains. Uh, some of the things we actually could actually run into in the concrete pipes, old ones, they're at the whole top of the pipes gone from the sewer gas, you know, that is, and then the rain just gets in it.
That's where the smoke testing would give us an idea.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so back again, uh, to talk about our street projects. So beginning with, uh, Fourth Street roadway, so Fourth Street is complete and, uh, but the, uh, the last six point five million hit this fiscal year. So that is why it's included, but that is one of the projects that is rolling off. Uh, after that, we have our annual street rehab program. And this is where you will find, uh, where we pay for our concrete curb and gutter repairs, our concrete pavement repairs, asphalt overlay projects are what we call our pavement preservation projects, which is kind of a thin overlay over a relatively recently rehabilitated road, uh, to preserve its life. Uh, crack ceiling, uh, in both asphalt and concrete to preserve the life of the road. Brick sidewalk, uh, repairs, pavement markings, pavement condition assessments, uh, and pavement management. So all of those items hit this line item. Uh, prior years, uh, was eleven million, prior year for FY twenty-five was eleven million dollars. Uh, for FY twenty-six, we're requesting that be increased to thirteen million dollars and we've adjusted for inflation. Inflation really is the driver on this. We performed a pavement condition study of the entire city and you can go on the city's website and see the results of that study. And so it color codes the road segments based on the condition of the road. And their, that consultant's recommendation is, uh, thirteen, two years ago was to spend thirteen million dollars per year. And that is to continue our current rate of gradual improvement of the overall road condition. So that's, that's that big line, line share of our road rehab. Uh, we have our bridge repairs, uh, the locations are citywide. Tech Stop performs inspections every two years of our off-system road bridges and then making recommendations for repairs. We have a contract currently uh, to start making these repairs. These were the smaller scale repairs that we were able to group the bridges together into a single contract. We expect that work to be finished this fiscal year and I came in at one point nine million dollars. Uh, another big, uh, conversation item is our annual sidewalk repairs. Uh, for FY twenty-five, we're using that funding towards our Fennett Road sidewalk in front of Beaumont United High School. Uh, for FY twenty-six, uh, we will be using some of that money to construct new uh, accessibility ramps along Highland in connection with the Highland Avenue roadway rehab project as well as, uh, making repairs and improving accessibility on our current sidewalk system. We don't have a sidewalk master plan as of yet, and so right now what we're doing is, uh, trying to preserve and improve our current system. Once a sidewalk master plan that is, uh, comprehensive of the entire city and is able to get input from citizens for the areas that they're advocating for, it identifies the pedestrian generators, your schools, your medical facilities, your commercial areas and that those areas that need, uh, need improved walkability. Uh, that master plan will identify those projects, prioritize those projects and then we can go to work and work through that plan. Uh, so after that is our next major road, uh, reconstruction project is Highland Avenue. The design is just about complete. We, uh, as part of the engineering, we engaged a consultant to uh, investigate the storm sewer. So we were trying to, you know, we're leading into the, uh, efforts to reduce the numbers of change orders on these construction projects. So we've engaged the consultant to, uh, televise the storm sewer system along Highland and found that the storm sewer system was, uh, in need of attention. So there's some point repairs that we're adding to the contract, but also too that what was not immediately obvious is that the storm lines down Highland were at least fifty percent full of sediment and mud, greatly impacting how efficiently the storm water could be drained out of that area. So the contractor cleaned these pipes, restored the carrying capacity of the storm sewer. So we have, have improved Highland already before we've even started doing the roadway work. But we are scheduled to advertise the project later this summer. And this project will take us from Cardinal Drive all the way to Washington Boulevard. So it will take Highland to its end behind Starbucks. We keep talking about Starbucks and now we're going to have a nice new road behind Starbucks. Uh, but also we will restore the, uh, pavement markings where Highland becomes Irving and goes to Washington Boulevard and, uh, increase, improve the accessibility and in, along that entire road. So we're looking forward to this project kicking off. Uh, after that, uh, we're starting to work on our major drive at Northwest Parkway proposed traffic signal. So that is scheduled, uh, for FY twenty-six and we look forward to improving the safety at that intersection. After that, we start getting, uh, more into our future roadway projects that are identified as rehabilitation projects. So Avenue A, uh, which takes us from College to Washington. Avenue A, south of Washington was, uh, rehabilitated as part of the Washington, uh, Phase One project as well as the Avenue A Phase One projects. So this just continues that, uh, roadway all the way up to College Street. Uh, we have a traffic and network fiber replacement down College. The city has a fiber line that connects, uh, downtown to our facilities on the west end of town, uh, Water Utilities, parks. And that fiber line is on, uh, power poles subject to getting hit by drivers in a crash can knock out our internet service, uh, to those offices. And I, I believe there's at least one fire station that also is often impacted by these outages. This project would, uh, bury those sections of line and improve the reliability of that communication system. Uh, we've included, uh, for a future for considering. Uh, we've included, uh, for a future for consideration in the general obligation, uh, bond, the citywide sidewalk master plan. So the work that I just described previously, this would be that, uh, that cost to perform that master plan. We have some bridges, uh, specific bridges, Highland Avenue, Calder Avenue bridges, uh, that are scheduled for future, uh, repairs or replacements and would widen the roads, uh, especially for Calder, uh, that is only 22 feet wide. So this would give us, uh, some more room. It would be a, uh, 40 foot wide structure so that now we can have, uh, safe pedestrian crossing as well at that bridge. Uh, after that, we have Broadway. Broadway is one of those roads that has sat on the CIP for a long time. Uh, we're transitioning it to a timeline now to rebuild it. Uh, Broadway's in pretty bad shape due to the trees, uh, impacting the road. And, uh, but we're, we're going to work on getting that one done. After that, you've got Park Street from College to MLK. Uh, that is, uh, a heavily used, uh, road, uh, would restore it. Pecos Street, this is a project that entered the CIP when, uh, Central High School was still, uh, a high school. And this would go from Third Street to Jaguar. Uh, it's a pretty significant rebuild as well, also too, because of this, the substantial oak trees that, uh, have impacted that roadway. Carroll Street and Sycamore Streets, uh, next to ExxonMobil. These are, uh, city streets that, uh, have heavy, heavy industrial use. Uh, new to the CIP now, we're, uh, in the future, we don't have these scheduled yet. College Street, uh, College, poor thing is taking, it was already in rough shape. And it's taking a beating now with the, this I-10 project and the increased traffic. Uh, this would rehabilitate College from I-10 to Main Street. So it would do new asphalt overlay to Goliad. And then from Goliad where it becomes concrete, we would do pavement repairs, uh, to concrete repairs and then all new striping down that road. Dusset is another road, uh, associated with ExxonMobil area in the Charlton Pollard neighborhood, uh, to, uh, restore it cause it has reached the end of its service life due to the heavy traffic. And then we get into the pricing for, uh, the Dallin Road Extension. So, um, that was not the cost I had. So for the streets and drainage portion of, uh, Dallin from College to Walden, that's 25, uh, almost 25.2 million dollars. And then the, from Walden to I-10 is additional 9.3 million dollars. Uh, the different, the reason why it's so different is in the portion, south of Washington Boulevard. Uh, I'm sorry. I forgot where it was. There's going to be where that, where it crosses the LMBA Canal. There's also DD6 has constructed a new ditch. So we're going to have to build a bridge to cross over both of those facilities, um, at one time. Next, after that, we also had the Dallin Road rehabilitation. So that would restore the asphalt pavement from College all the way to Concord. And that's estimated at 5.5 million dollars. Uh, East Lucas roadway rehabilitation, um, you know, that's portion from Magnolia to Pine is narrow, uh, with roadside ditches. And the project would, uh, replace that asphalt pavement and widen the travel lanes by a foot each way. Doesn't sound like much, but every bit of that width makes a difference. We're hamstrung by the, um, the ditches in this, but it would improve that road. Gladys Street from Dowlin to I-10. So we replaced the water line down there, uh, along the stretcher road due to, from Lucas to Dowlin, uh, in response to the significant number of discolored water issues there. And now this would be the pavement restoration from Dowlin all the way to I-10. Uh, the Jim Gilligan roadway rehab, that is from MLK to Jimmy Simmons. This is a concrete, uh, road, four lanes. It's an arterial road, significant amount of traffic on it as well. And, um, it is in need of repairs. Uh, a new project also is, uh, the area along Dollinger Road at North Seventh Street, uh, where the concrete plant, Modern Concrete is located. Uh, that road, uh, has taken a beating from the trucks servicing that, uh, facility. And so this would, uh, repave the road from North 11th Street down all the way to Cottonwood to St. Helena. And then restore North Seventh Street from Dollinger to the I-10 feeder road. Nature Street, uh, similar to the Park Street, this would also go from College to MLK. We have, uh, rehabilitation of Avenue C. And this would go from Harriet all the way to the railroad at Crockett Street. Almost there. Uh, then we have the Point Parkway North Extension at 5.5 million dollars. This is the roadway and drainage portion that would connect Northwest Parkway to Highway 105. And then we are in the process of applying for a, um, a grant as well to help fund this, but the citywide school zone sign improvements. So this would, uh, improve all of the signage, uh, for all of the school zones. Uh, bring them all up to, to current, uh, codes. It would be uniform. They would all have solar powered assemblies in, uh, in order to build, uh, and cloud-based monitoring of those, uh, fixtures. So that if you have an issue, we can address those quickly. So if there are any questions.
Councilman Hilliard, did you have a question? Mike, yeah.
One of the questions that I was asked a lot on the campaign trail that has to do with public safety would be the, the sidewalks, uh, from Gladys, uh, starting Dowlin and, and maybe going down to, uh, Lucas. Because of the kids that are leaving, Marshall and Sally Curtis are having to literally wa- walk in the bike trails. And so I know that that's a concern for a lot of families. And so I didn't know if maybe that was a sidewalk, uh, master plan that was in the works or has that even been thought about?
It's, it's one of the ones that we're looking at for, for future school zone, uh, interconnectivity. Uh, is definitely going to be something that would be considered in the sidewalk master plan, the, the citywide one. And, uh, so that all, all of those concerns can be received and, um, measured by the consultant along with the public input and have those town hall meetings, process all that information so that we can get to those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
Yeah, I noticed you said on Park Street from College to MLK. Well, what about past MLK, like from there all the way to Cardinal Drive on Park Street? I mean, to Florida.
Currently, we don't have it in the program, but we can look at the, um,
checked it recently, but I get a lot of calls about that street. It's a pretty busy street.
It is. It is. We'll take a look at it. When they put in that large diameter gas line, uh, I think that, that caused a lot of disruption, uh, a couple of years ago. So we'll take a look at it.
Okay. That's also where they had, where, uh, Park and Florida intercept, man, they had to go under the railroad track. They had to do emergency replacement there. It was covered with a piece of metal for years.
Hey, we finally finished that one.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner.
Ms. Molly, thank you for the presentation. Two things, um, the railroad tracks on Lucas Street, you know, a couple of seniors been asking about that. I don't know where we at or how we looking on that. Uh, can we get an update on that?
I'm glad you brought that up. So Tech Stop and BNSF Railroad, uh, it's a Tech Stop project, uh, which sounds odd because it, it, that's, East Lucas is not a Tech Stop road. But they have prepared the construction drawings, they're coordinating with BNSF Railroad. And they reached out to us for concurrence on the project. We've been waiting on them, uh, for many years. We have already identified the funding to, um, but we have to wait for the railroad. They're going to redo all the panels on that railroad crossing. When they do, cause our request was extend those panels longer so we can build that sidewalk and connect it. I'm not sure how they lost sight of the fact that we had made that request, but they did. Here we are. Uh, but they are moving forward with that project. And so we have committed, uh, to construct that sidewalk. So as soon as they let us go do the work, we're going to go do that work.
You can bring me to the next meeting with you. I give them a little pressure.
Both of us.
Yeah. My, my second, my second question is, um, Councilman Sherwood, I appreciate you reaching out. Nadana Sherwood, I appreciate you reaching out to me because when we were looking at the budget for our CIP, she had questions about streets and how they were identified and where they were located. And I told her, you can find those numbers and those specific projects in the CIP. So can you kind of explain, how do we even coordinate which one of these streets are a priority? I know we have the machine, but I want to explain it to the new people. And the second thing is just explain to people how they can look at the CIP and you can see specifically where these projects are itemized.
Before you do that, this is that 20.5 million dollar notice that we, most of these projects are listed there, right?
Yes, especially those right there at the top.
Okay. Good job.
Yes, ma'am.
You got some clarification on that.
Yes, ma'am. So we, uh, there's, there's two places you can look. So, yeah, of course, always our CIP is published on the city's website and you can, uh, download it and go into those project worksheets and, and get, get a high level overview of the limits of the project and what the general scope of work will be. After that, then how do, how do we consider projects for future projects to add to the CIP? As you can see here, we've got a lot of work to do. Um, our souls are probably some, uh, the most adverse to having smooth roads. Uh, that this, so Beaumont gumbo clay is, is just terrible. So we, every couple of years, we hire a consultant to go do a pavement condition study. And so they have their trucks with their cameras or, um, imaging and, and sensors. So as they're driving along, they're feeling the roughness of the road. They're taking images of the road. They're identifying the cracks, the potholes, those sorts of things. And then they score all, every segment of road in our system, which is over 600 centerline miles of road that we are responsible for. And there is a color coded map. It's called our PCI map. So if you go on the city's website, go to Public Works, there's a, uh, a menu and you can see pavement condition study. And there's a story map that shows you, you know, what, what does a, a good road look like? What does a fair road look like? What does a poor road look like? And then you can go into that map and you can click around and look at any road that you're interested in and see what color was assigned to it. You can click on that segment and you can see what that segment's score was. Or you can get the score for that stretch of road. And so that is very important in how we evaluate it. It depends on the usage of the road. Is it a major arterial? Is it a collector or is it a local residential street? And most of our local streets, they'll be seen in the, uh, annual street rehab program. Uh, but if it is an arterial, major collector, they usually have their own identified projects separately. Also, at any point, also on the city's website under Public Works, you can look at maps of our, uh, street rehab, concrete repairs, pavement preservation. I'm sure David's going to let me know I'm missing one. But you can click on those maps and it's, it's just a Google map that'll pop up. And it will highlight the roads that we have done since 2020. And so, you know, we'll get a complaint that says, you know, y'all haven't touched my neighborhood in forever. And you can click on there and see that, well, we were, we didn't replace their road, but we did their neighbor behind them's road five years ago. And so we'll have that information. It's there all the time. Every time we issue a new contract, we update these maps so that we can be, uh, so we can have that information there at your fingertips.
Councilman Williams.
Could you, excuse me, e- explain the, kind of what the annual street rehabilitate, rehabilitation program consists of? And, and, and maybe what led to the, to the 20% increase? Are we doing some, some more projects or?
This is to maintain, uh, so previously we were doing about $8 million worth of work a year. And unfortunately asphalt has gone crazy, uh, in a nutshell. Even our limestone, uh, prices have doubled. Um, but you know, when oil did its thing, especially after COVID, that's really what disrupted our pricing. And so what used to cost a hundred dollars a ton of asphalt, we're north now of $200 a ton. Uh, some of these smaller projects, we don't like to bid smaller projects. Cause you'll see those price, we saw another agency bid, bid a small project and their pricing almost hit $300 a ton in asphalt. And so by doing the volume projects, you know, we're able to get some economies of scale. But this is directly, uh, in response to, um, you know, of course labor wages have increased. Uh, but really it's the materials.
Okay. So just the new costs of doing business?
It is. It is. And also too, there is no longer any competition for asphalt in, in southeast Texas. So when, uh, there was this one supplier that, uh, he sold his business to Gulf Coast or whatever they're called today, um, that was it. So now all of the asphalt material is essentially coming from them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Great presentation.
Thank you. Got one more. This'll be quick. This'll be quick.
Page 151.
So now we're in drainage. So you, you will see that we do not have a substantial number of drainage projects. And that is a, really comes from the fact that the city takes care of the city's drainage systems. But then we connect to Drainage District Six. Drainage District Six is the one who owns, maintains the large drainage channels. So that's where that, that distinction comes from. And DD6 is a great partner with the city of Beaumont. And they've got some projects that we could, you know, if y'all are interested, we can get y'all connected with DD6 to, they, they can explain their projects. But, uh, first on our list is our citywide ditching program. So when we started in Public Works in 2020, uh, we realized there was a significant need to muck out the ditches and keep the drainage capacity in our roadside ditches. And, but you know, kind of subsequent to the grade all conversation that we had earlier this week. So this is the contract, uh, that every year we're ditching 20% of the city per year. And, uh, in order to do that, there was a significant amount of engineering that goes into it. So that delayed us and has our last year of roadside ditching scheduled for FY 2030. Then, so for future consideration or FY 2031, we are going to go back and reassess the roadside ditches. And this is the future funding to hit any areas that again, need additional attention. But this is, uh, to put the ditches to grade. If there are driveway culverts that are more than three inches out of grade, we reset those culverts and just restore the flow capacity in the roadside ditches. Laura Edition, uh, which is off of Erie Street, south of Cardinal Drive, uh, has just kicked off. This was a grant project in response to Imelda. And, uh, we are going to, uh, improve those roadside ditches and set new culverts and have a new drainage connection from Chambliss into DD6's ditch. Partner to that, also because of Imelda, uh, with grant funding from the GLO, the Phelps Road Drainage Improvements, uh, since the, uh, Terrell Park area was significantly impacted by Imelda and Harvey, uh, we will be doing similar improvements as we are doing on the Laura Edition. That project is scheduled to advertise for bid late summer and, uh, go finish construction in FY 26.
Molly.
Sir.
Uh, for the new folks on council, that Phelps Road, at first GLO had denied that grant. And so, um, Bart, he called me and said, if you know some folks out there that got pictures of flooding in Imelda, get them to send them to me. So they said, So they sent me a bunch of pictures and I sent it to Bart and they reapplied for the grant. And because of the pictures that the folks that live out there sent, we was able to get the, the three hundred thousand dollars by the citizens participating as well.
Yes, we are definitely grateful because it, it made no sense why that was uh, denied. But actually to correct you, the grant is a million dollars. So y'all really did some good work for us. Uh, so then we have our annual stormwater pipe inspection, point repairs and data asset management. So this is a new, newer program is asset management of our stormwater system. Uh, in twenty nineteen, the city had engaged a consultant to prepare stormwater master plan. And so we uh, are working on um, truthing a lot of the, there's a lot of this infrastructure that was put in uh, uh, over a century ago. So we're having to uh, go back and investigate areas. Uh, we make the emergency point repairs when a cavity opens up uh, after a rain event uh, on the storm sewer system. And uh, so we have seen uh, the Gladys at Lucas uh, major repair. Part of that was funded through this, this line item. The uh, West Lucas Drive Storm Sewer Rehabilitation. There's a major storm sewer line that runs uh, down West Lucas. Currently we're, the four point five million is for the stabilization of the exterior of this pipe. FY twenty-six then will uh, li- structurally line the interior of the stormwater pipe and uh, restore it so that we don't have any future failures in it. Uh, as expensive as this project is, uh, coming in almost sixteen million dollars, it's still a fraction of the cost it would have been had we excavated and tried to replace the pipe altogether. So uh, embracing new technologies and, and new materials, we're able to do this uh, project at this cost. Then our, a newer item, uh, this is our second or third year in the CIP, is our underpass pump station repairs and improvements. So the city uh, maintains eight underpasses. Most of them are on MLK, we have one on Fourth Street, we have one on Eleventh Street. Park in Orleans is another one. When it rains, these are bowls and you have to pump the water out. And they are reaching a certain age and they're requiring uh, requiring some care. Uh, it's an, it's a tough environment uh, for them to operate in. Also too, in response to lightning strikes, um, one of our uh, major underpasses on MLK recently was struck by lightning, causing a s- uh, significant amount of repairs needed. And that's, this is a line item that pays for those repairs. Irving Underpass Pump Station Generator Replacement is a grant application project uh, in response to last year's storms, uh, to place a generator at the Irving Street Underpass. This is important for the Charlton Pollard neighborhood and for ExxonMobil and the Port of Beaumont to continue to do business in the event of a power outage that they can have uh, safe access through that underpass. And then another grant, uh, federal earmark application project is the Underpass Flooding Early Warning System Improvements. So when the underpass is flooded, and especially hard to see at night, you'd be amazed how many people don't turn around uh, when it's flooded. Uh, but this would be the, the hazard lights, uh, the coordination, communication back to the real time crime center to um, improve the safety of all of our underpasses. Any questions?
Councilman Hill, Hilliard, then Councilman Sherwood. I'm gonna start looking left first.
The um, the, the citywide ditching program, um, the area, it's in, it's in my ward uh, off of, between College and Walden. They're, they're in desperate need of, of their ditches to be done. That was another one of the things that when it rains, their yards flood, the culverts are backed up. Some of the culverts are, are too small, they're full of mud. And so question is, is that area gonna be part of the? And, and another question is, w- why don't, why don't we cover those up? Why don't we put pipes and cover those holes up so we don't have to do the ditch digging process anymore in these neighborhoods?
What we have found, so twofold, uh, your first question, if they, if it's a roadside ditch, it's less than four feet deep, then it will eventually be captured in the citywide ditching program. If they're having acute issues and water is standing after a storm, they definitely need to call it into three one one and make sure that there's not a, a collapse or something that's happening that's impeding. Or if it's a property maintenance issue, we can coordinate with community development and we can work through those issues.
Okay.
In the meantime, before they get set to their new grade. On the other question, so we have, one of the things that we learned right away when I came to Public Works is that the enclosure of roadside ditches is negatively impacting drainage in neighborhoods. And the reason why we say that is most of those culverts are small diameter. They're usually twelve to fifteen inches in diameter, which is not enough to carry the water that we see. They may or may not have an inlet uh, to let the water get into those pipes. If they have an inlet, is it clean? And we've gone through neighborhoods that have had issues and we find out that, you know, the inlets are covered with this, this much silt and sod. So that's not gonna convey any water. Uh, also too, most of those culverts are not set at grade. Uh, in the Laura Edition, we, yes, that was a detailed uh, survey that we did. And what we found is a lot of the issue in that neighborhood was directly related to the fact of uh, some of the citizens piping in their ditches. And you, it, when you look on the plan and profile sheet, you see that that pipe is doing like a sawtooth, trying to get from one end to the other, and that's not hydraulically efficient. And so what we're doing here is upsizing the pipes, setting them at grade so that we can maximize the cross section. The most efficient way to drain an area here is an open ditch. And so it, the enclosing these ditches has really become a problem and which is why we now get, when we get requests from citizens to enclose the ditch in front of their home is that they have to submit an engineering study to ensure that they are not going to negatively impact their neighbors.
Okay. Councilwoman Sherwood?
I just wanted to say thank you on the underpass flooding early warning system. I've had two family members, older family members involved in a rescue thing where they not paying attention or maybe just, I don't know, whatever. But if they knew that it was flooded or flashing lights or something, don't do it, that can be helpful, I appreciate that.
It, it, it's very stressful. I have stood at the side of an, of underpasses on more than one occasion, you know, with my heart in my throat and waiting for the fire divers to go verify that there's no one in the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's important.
Good, I like it.
Thanks.
All right, excellent presentation, oh, Councilman Durio. Hit it the last minute.
I think this is, we, and we discussed a little bit about this yesterday, the quiet zone. I mean, is it any plan on, on trying to do something to get those installed? As far as, uh, like I mentioned yesterday, SP Road from Washington Boulevard all the way to Flo- uh, to Cardinal Drive?
I know that we recovered the cost estimates that were repaired in twenty seventeen. So, and I know that we were in the process of updating those cost estimates. I believe that zone in twenty seventeen was approaching three million dollars. So if, if, if it's council's desire to add that to the CIP, we can see how that, that could work, make it to the plan.
Whatever the process is, I read a lot of calls about that.
Sure.
And one last thing, uh, the lighting, and y'all do a pretty good job of it as far as the streetlights. But it's, it's, y'all only do it, I guess, if somebody calls in about it. Do they ride around periodically at night and check? Because really South Beaumont, South Park, Harrow Archer, uh, the area by John's Live, across from John's Library, Blossom off of Twenty-third, Taro Park, uh, all, all those areas at night. It's really, really dark. Now, y'all did just do one over there off of Twenty-third Street where they had to, or they're gonna do it. They said they, the ladies cut the trees back so they could put the lights off. But all those areas, and usually they'll call me and I'll send an email to you guys and y'all take care of it. But is it any way to be, I guess, more proactive as far as actually going out and checking them?
We do night runs once a month and we do them for the freeway lighting and uh, Dallin Road, Northwest Parkway, that the city's responsible for those Cobra Lights. Energy, it's, we'll get a request every once in a while from council, from citizens to go look at certain areas of energy responsible lights. But normally we don't do the entire city. Energy has done in the past some blitzing downtown area and. I can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Turn your mic off.
Well, I, I can, I can kind of help because that was a big issue with me too. And so I reached out to Energy, they put me in touch with the gentleman that's over that. And they say they, every two to three years, they do a blitz of the city. And so I said, well, if they do a blitz of the city, there's a lot of the city they're not doing. And so uh, I'm actually meeting with him next week and uh, we're gonna go over. That's one of the things that I want to talk about in our, in my ward. I didn't, you know, I know it's a problem all over the city, but I'll definitely include you. You come and Ladonna too, if you, if it's an issue in your ward and we can all three talk to them about, you know, maybe them stepping up their game.
Really, we talked to the citizens, they call Energy and they really, it's, it's better when y'all call them than when the citizens call them.
So we did do, we had communication, uh, because there were representatives uh, in the community that were uh, you know, on their drive from, you know, they live off of Dallin, work at ExxonMobil. And they are regularly calling in these areas and we have coordinated with Energy. And they promised then to do a night, a, a night blitz in the Charlton Pollard area and um, other portions of South End. Uh, the results of that is um, I don't know, because I know that once we upgrade to the LEDs, it's counterintuitive, we pay more. Uh, so you know, it's kind of be in their best interest to put more lights out there, but I digress. So we can continue to put pressure on them as well and encourage them to, to work on that.
Squeaky wheel gets the oil.
Yeah, we, uh, cause I don't know if Energy realizes, you know, when they do their blitz, but Beaumont is bigger than just Dallin Road, you know?
Well, the, uh, and we do regularly, so like when we were dealing with the issues on um, Park in Pennsylvania, underpass pump stations. And I, I was shocked at how dark, you know, once you get off of MLK, just how dark it was. And so we have been pressuring them to improve the lighting in, in those, those streets, Armecrag, Gray, that area as well to improve those lights.
And maybe uh, City Attorney Sheree, Ms. Reed could answer this. Is that something that we could require of Energy by ordinance?
Nope.
Thought I'd ask.
Councilman Turner?
Well, I, I, I don't understand, I, I drive from, from Port Arthur and even on the freeways, everything is LED lighting. Soon as you cross over into Beaumont, it turns the dull yellow-orange color. Maybe we need Energy to come to the diocese and do a presentation soon. I think it'd be better handled that way if you can, Mr. Williams.
That's always effective to get it done before you, or you can put them, put them on notice. Uh, we did get them to do a blitz downtown. Uh, when we got here downtown, the lighting was off and terrible. So we got them to come in and put in LED lighting, so they were responsive to that project and we appreciate them for doing that. Also then our department head means I, I stress with directors that it's their employees are working at night to note lights, lights that are out, you know, not to police department, whoever works at night. Sometimes that, that's pretty effective too, because as was noted, we pay for those lights whether they're burning or not. So it's to our benefit that they, that they are working. So we'll, we'll continue our efforts to do that. Some people have found uh, Energy's website pretty effective in reporting lights and getting them back on. I had one off of my street and I reported to us and I reported to them both. And anyway, it was, it was working the next night. So I would encourage people to do that too.
Yeah, I'm just, some of my constituents to use the website, but uh, you know, the eighty year old lady, she don't want to use the website, she wants to use the telephone. So it doesn't work for her. I, I just want to say, everybody that made a presentation, Mr. Wiggins told us to make up a list of the things that y'all wanted. And I had a three page list, but y'all covered everything that I had on my list. Oh, thank you.
I had a couple, on the high mass lighting, we're responsible traffic management for maintaining those under text dot contract. And as they're going out, we are uh, changing those to LED, but as it's, it's as they go out.
Oh, Lord.
And it's the three one one, uh, citizens call three one one, three one one is also informing them about the website, but they are sending it to traffic management. And I go in as well and report it and we found the more people report it, the quicker Energy responds.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that our last one?
Yes, sir, it was the last presentation. Here we have a funding summary of all the proposals that you just heard from the department directors for the various groups. So in FY twenty twenty-six, we are, we have a total of one hundred twenty-nine million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. For twenty twenty-seven, we have a projected expense of one hundred forty-two million, six hundred, three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. For twenty twenty-eight, we have ninety-nine million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, fifty dollars. Twenty twenty-nine, we have one hundred, three million, nine hundred forty-eight, one hundred fifty dollars. And then for twenty thirty, we have sixty-one million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars for a total of five hundred thirty-seven million, four hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. And after this, we'll be taking questions from any councilmen who have questions next.
Any additional questions? Did a great job.
Best part.
Okay, Mayor, item two, fiscal year twenty twenty-six golden priorities of the mayor and city council. My staff and staff, we like to hear of your priorities or goals you'd like to see in the budget, a budget preparation. You know, it helps us to shape this document. As I said earlier, you, you know, this is a competitive process for dollars. Cities don't have infinite number of dollars. So we need to hear your job priorities are and start to build this document around those things that are most important to you and goals you'd like to achieve over this time period. So Mayor, if we could possibly hear from each council member, it would be beneficial.
Absolutely. We'll start over with you, Councilman Durio.
As I said before, just about everything that I had on my list as a priority on those three pages, y'all covered.
And I encourage staff to get out your pens and start writing, okay?
Two, two things that I didn't mention, we already said, uh, mentioned the quiet zones. Um, Mr. Boone, we had spoke about it a few meetings ago, the uh, BISD property over there on Waverly Drive. Uh, was y'all able to talk to them about that or look into that?
Yes, we've reached out, I know Ms. Loki's been in con- conversation with BISD and I think we're trying to set up a meeting to try to get that moving.
And only other thing, I guess, for Mr. Raggett, I was, uh, I had on my list, uh, Walking Track at Liberia Park. I think I mentioned that to you before also. Maybe something like the, what Mr. Neal had mentioned, uh, what do you call that, the exercise court? Fitness court, that's a lot, that's an elderly neighborhood and that's something I think that they could really use over there, a fitness court and a walking track. I think everything else, make sure, let me check my list, make sure y'all covered everything. Oh, I wanted to, uh, what was the um, priority for me was the uh, the whole park's master plan, everything in it. Yeah. Um, we talked about it, the activity center that's gonna be in the center of town and that's a great idea, but those kids over there in the South Park area don't have anything like that at all. And I don't know if they can catch the bus, they might, I don't know. But it'd be good to have something in centralized and people in that neighborhood could walk to, those kids could walk over there. Done the resurfacing. Did y'all, I spoke with Josh Allen, ADD six, and he said today, remember they came to us for the funding to finish that project? We said that they got their funding from somewhere else to finish that project. So whatever we could do to assist them with that, you know, but I think they're going to do it themselves. They're getting ready, I think they're getting ready to kick it off. They had funding for the drainage to run from the, is it from Carly Street all the way to Nature's River?
Yes, sir.
One long run to help with the flooding in that area and they, they got funded for that already.
Bless you. Yes, they, they had initially come to us and wanted about 15 million dollars to do the utility relocations. But then my last conversation with the district manager was that they had found a source for that funding. But we're ready for review of those construction drawings once they have them done.
And I believe, thank you, Molly. I believe. Yeah, I think that's it. Everything else, like I said, y'all all covered it. I even had the water park on here and covered that too as well. So you guys did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
You covered a lot, you know, quiet zones, ditches, toilets flushing. I would like to see another set of basketball courts at Rogers Park. If anybody's ever driven by there, there's, it's, it's well-used and I think that another basketball court there would, would, would go very well. And it would be, it would be used. So I, I think that would be something. The lights, you know, that's one of the things we covered, but and, and, and the roads, which you cover too. A lot of the roads in our area have, there's a lot of potholes, there's a lot of holes. And that's a concern for a lot of people in the road too.
So citizens are encouraged to report potholes at any time to 311. And there is a live map that tracks the last 30 days of calls for potholes. We, by practice and policy, try to address the potholes within 48 hours, weather permitting. So if it is indeed a pothole or, or, you know, defect in the road, please call it in and give us a chance to address it.
Okay. And I, I think I got four calls to see if the city could put a Starbucks at Dallin and Calder, but I didn't think that was possible, but.
Department.
No, other than that, I mean, pretty much everything, yeah. Everything that y'all covered, a lot of our concerns and a lot of the, the things that, that the people in my ward are, are concerned about. And so, you know, we've worked on the quiet zone, we've, we're, we're going to work on the infrastructure. And the only thing additional would be the, the basketball courts. Maybe even a pickleball court at Rogers Park, but I see how much that costs. So we'll go with the basketball court.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
I'm sorry, mayor. All right. My first thing, Mr. Manager, is we discussed this in the past, but I would like to see this at the close of the ending year, the full employee evaluations and the performing, the performance plans to be executed. I'd like to kind of see the results of some of those evaluations. One thing that goes with that is on the campaign trail and just period in the city, I get, it's frustrating at times because I actually know how hard our department heads and our staff works. And you hear a lot of critiques. And I think when we have these evaluations to prove that this person worked at this level, at this salary, and this is the evaluation on them, it'll show a benefit of why they're being paid what they're paid. Cause even when you look at the finances and you understand the budget, you gotta look at what departments are eating up the majority of it. So I think we need to have that. The second thing is a public safety plan to address more diversity within the department. I kind of like to see the hiring plan and how aggressive we'll be to get more diversity within the department. The next thing would be, we need a specific plan to know how we would address seeing our offices in more high-volume crime areas. I'd kind of like to see that in writing. With the, with the fire department as well, I would like to see the whole cadet and hiring plan. I know we're working on it, but as a goal, I would like to see that all in writing in black and white. Something that's been asked about often is transparency policies. I'm looking to see how can people go and make reports? And once they make reports, what are the steps? Another thing is a lot of people ask questions about body cams. Maybe we can have something in writing on how that happens and what we go about to get that done. I would just want to be as transparent as possible to those type of things. My next thing is ensure our finances are in order. I want to increase the fund balance and reduce expenditures, similar to what we said. I'm looking to see impact fees, parking fees for new development. Okay.
He can provide this to you in writing.
I'm, I'm gonna send it to him. Yeah. Yeah. Is in our budget that the state average, that the state average, we, we need, I just want to be more in line with the state average. We're, we're looking at our budget and I think as a council, historically since I've been on it, I've been making comments about data-driven decisions. We, we can't just put money where we feel like it. We need to make sure we in line with state average. We can't complain about deficits and budget spending if we're not even in line with the state average. So I, I want the city to be data-driven decisions, make sure we in line with the state. We don't need to be too far off in certain departments. You know, Bund projects, I'm real big on the sports complex. I think that would be transformational. And senior citizens over the age of 65, can we look at, to see how would it impact our budget? If we capped their taxes, if they've been in their home for over 20 years? Maybe if the tax rate went up or down, we just capped them at whatever the rate they're already paying because most seniors on fixed income. I want to see how would that impact our budget? And my last thing is our committees. I think it's great. We have committees, but I would like to see our committees actually come and give an update on progress of what's going on in the committee meetings. I think we have great committees, but I just want that, you know, the oversight to where we know the goals that they're trying to accomplish and they're letting us know what's going on at these meetings if we can't make them all. And if we are looking to do new committees, I would say permitting and economic development committee. I think we need a veterans committee. I'm open to a policy committee. And I know we have an animal patrol committee, but I know the mayor only makes appointments to that. You know, maybe we, as council could have some input on that as well.
You got that? Is that it? Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I mean, this report was, it's good. I mean, even someone as green as me, that's a good tool to, to have. And it's exciting to see all the, the work and the, the thought that's gone into it. And, you know, a large focus on activities and things for, for people to do. And, and while I'm, I love that, I, I think it's important that we also focus on safety and then making sure people in the city feel safe. And, and so, you know, for me, part of that starts with working towards fully staffing our fire department, listening to the needs of Chief Agnieszek and, and the police department. And what do they need to, you know, let kids feel safer when they're on the streets? And I, I think it goes hand in hand whenever, you know, if we want families to, to call this home, to, to get out and, and to vote, to invest more of their money into this city, then it's our job to make sure we're keeping them as safe as possible. So that, that would be number one for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sherwood?
Some of my main huge off-the-chart concerns are youth. I know that I talk a lot about youth engagement, youth programs. I want to, while we've done a lot of infrastructure-driven things, I'd like to figure out a way for us to have more partnerships or internships or programs directed towards working with the labor union or working with Baptist or working with St. E, ExxonMobil, even inside the city's departments to offer youth opportunities to see what the city has available in the way of jobs. And I, I need some more, I want more youth engagement programs that maybe the city can partner with outside agencies. Youth engagement is big and offering them opportunities and activities and something to look forward to is a very big deal. I'd like to see some partnership with the economic development. I think we have an economic development department where we're courting businesses or partnering with the chamber to proactively look for companies that may possibly be expanding to figure a way to encourage them to come here in ways that we can incentivize bringing businesses to Beaumont. That's important to me and not just necessarily downtown. I'm actually going to be interested in meeting with the city manager because I've got a company that's interested in opening up possibly two pharmacies inside of Ward Three. And I want help negotiating what they may need or what we can do because Ward Three needs some pharmacies. That's an important thing that my constituents have been speaking about. We did talk about some things that were important for me, which is streets and drainage and sidewalks. And so that was a big deal that we, we kind of already talked about. Another thing that I'd, I'd be interested in as far as an event, I, I want to see us do something for Four On Nday. Just something fun and exciting that maybe we can introduce as something as a city to do for Four On Nday. But that's all I've got for now. Good job. I appreciate you. I appreciate the presentation. And I am super excited about all the work that you're doing here. I love it. Good job.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, well, I would just like to add, I think everybody did a tremendous job. Y'all were very well-prepared and the information was there. And, and one takeaway, I know since we do have new council people in the last two years, I'm, I'm still new. But I've learned a lot and our, you know, oftentimes in the community, I'll even bring it up on my phone. It's a little interesting because people talk about transparency or lack thereof. And honestly, you can't be more transparent than our city. And when you, as they were talking about the ditches and the road scoring, you can go in and get information on just about anything, but it takes a little bit of work. You've got to go to a website. You've got to go to the departments. You've got to go, but educating yourself is very helpful. So you can tell people. And I know also getting in, you're going to get a lot of calls about people wanting things. And I learned real quick, well, it took me a little bit because I, you know, I was pushing the information forward. And now I've learned to say, hey, have you called 311? And most of the time when they've called me, they say they hadn't. And I said, well, there's an app. I can send you a link to the app or call 311 because I may not be able to answer my phone one day and you still want this fixed. And you're going to find that 311 really works. And as I've done that over the last couple of years, I'll get people calling me back that it's like a great find for them to find out 311 is there and it works. Now, you know, and, and there are those occasions that people say, hey, I called 311 and, you know, I didn't get the response that I wanted. And, you know, and I, I, we certainly follow up on that. And oftentimes it's because it might be their problem and not ours. And, you know, it was tried to be communicated with them. But I, I would recommend, you know, get familiar with the website and, and you can't do it in a day. I mean, I'm just going to tell you, you, you can't. And I'm still learning things on that and also how important 311 is because that helps us be better. And clearly, as we know now, there's four new council people on here. So the council people that are here, they change, but the systems we're developing work whether we're sitting here or somebody else is sitting here. And the more we work towards improving those and making sure they're efficient. I know for future generations and to make Beaumont better, you know, people need not be dependent on their council people. We want them reaching out to us, but we certainly want them using the systems that we have to, to use. And so I would just remind y'all to please encourage them. And I don't think you're, you know, shifting responsibility. You know, I've had people say, well, you're, that's why you're calling me. And older people can call 311 and that young people with tech can, can use the app. And, and I've found that, you know, people have been real impressed with it. And so we do have good, good resources, but it's about knowing how to access them and following up with that. That's important. And the better educated we are up here, the better educated we can make the public when they're, when they're addressing us. And you can create shortcuts on your phone. I've done that on some of these websites about roads and ditching. So you can go there, I can show them right then. I said, I'll send you the link. And it's like, whoa. And, you know, it can change the conversation pretty quickly. So anyway, and.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
I'm sorry, one other thing. The water bill paying process, we need to look at that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have council member comments after this, I guess. Yeah, and we can do that and also recognize too, as, as Councilman Turner is going to do, it's good to bring it up, but you can also always email the city manager at any time on concerns like that. And you're going to find that you'll get responses and follow up on it as well. We will, we'll circle back to comments as well. So do you, you want to hold your comments to comments or it sounds, it sounds like everybody's wanting comments again. So I'm fine with that. Okay. Councilman Hilliard, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't understand the assignment, I guess. But I, I would like to see the civil service exam enacted for anyone in Beaumont with a high school diploma or GED to begin to replace our ranks in the fire and the police. That's big and that is youth-oriented and youth-driven, and I think it's important. I would like to see the response times on the 311 calls. If I call about my water line broken, how long does it take for them, for someone to come out and, and, and look at it? Those are two real important ones for me. So especially the civil service exam.
Councilman Turner is back.
Well, I, I just want to say, you know, when you evaluate a city manager or you evaluate an employee that works under you, one thing I'm big on is I was able to say, in my decision, when I chose to do what I do, did, my evaluation and my vote to support what I supported was based upon what he accomplished on the list of my goals. My goals this year was, it was the same way last year and the year before that. And the city manager has delivered on the list of things that he was asked to be accomplished. You, you, you can't, you can't look at someone and make an evaluation if you don't give them a goal or a target to hit. And I just want to be on the same page as the council. Let, let's give goals and targets to hit. And then you can explain why you choose to make the decisions you make. Now, if he didn't hit them, I probably wouldn't have been, been as supportive, but he did. So that's why I'm just saying, I just think it's important that we do give these goals and make sure we give them a, a list to hit. So we can actually evaluate off merit and, and not personal pressure or political pressure.
Councilman Durio?
Yeah, I agree with that 100%. AJ, thanks for saying that. This one thing, you know, this about what Joy was, Mr. Hilliard was saying, what people want, and he even brought up pickleball courts and people laugh, pickleball courts. But that's something that a lot of people are doing and a lot of people want now. And I would ask, I don't know if it's parks or recreation, to look into the use. Cause I know they're expensive, but you could turn a tennis court into a pickleball court a lot cheaper. And we have some tennis courts, I don't know how much they're even being used. It might be able to be transformed into pickleball court at a less expense than having to start from scratch. So I mean, I don't know what, how y'all would do it. You guys are the professionals. You could look into the use at like, say, Spot Park, Magnolia Park, they have tennis courts. See how much they're being used and they might be able to transform those into a, a pickleball court. And I can get former councilman guests to come over to the neighborhood and teach them how to play it.
He doesn't play pickleball.
Oh, he doesn't?
He has his own tennis hall too.
Well, yeah, if y'all could find a way to see exactly how much, where they have these, these tennis courts, how much they're actually being used and see if it might be feasible to transform into a, a pickleball court.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, just like to thank the council for participating today and providing the, the dialogue feedback on what, what we're doing here today. You know, it's gonna be, this is gonna be your budget, it's not gonna be my budget. We just put it together. It's gonna be your document to vote on eventually at some point. So, uh, we wanted to reflect the things that you, that are important to you. And we have two more workshops scheduled, and we're, and we're not trying to punish you, I'm, I promise. But we're just trying to get here to get a great, great document. Cause you know, next time we come, there'll be directors coming and reporting to you. Each one will give you a direct report on their budget. It won't be so much specific to infrastructure projects. It'll be about the activities that they're doing, the things they put together in, in that particular budget. And it will include more things like social programs or partnering rec programs more than projects. So you'll get an opportunity at that, uh, uh, again, at that meeting. That'll be another full meeting like this one. It's gonna be time-consuming and, and then that third meeting, uh, will be less time-consuming, but we'll still be there. And there'll still be, as I said, there'll be items on some agendas during the regular, uh, uh, council meetings sometimes that you will have to address, will make a report to you, things that pertain to this budget process that's gonna happen in this budget. So, uh, as I said in the movie, Smoking the Bandit, we have a long way to go in the short time to get there. He recognized. Well, I'm glad it's not me Chris is talking to this. Uh, to get there, uh, but we will get there and we'll have a good, uh, document when we finish. But, uh, thank you for your attention and like to thank staff for the work they've done. They've already started and they've been putting in lots of time. Finance, we'll put in tremendous amounts of time. These numbers and things just don't get together by themselves. It takes a tremendous amount of work to, to compile these documents and compile this information. So I commend them for all the staff for what they're doing. They do a great job. So thank you, thank you, Mayor, and that's all I have to say.
All right, it's important, uh, all these dates get put on our calendars. It's important that we do our best to attend and certainly life and work gets in the way of things, but, uh, a lot of good information is presented here. And, uh, it's all also put on the website to be able to be viewed later. And, uh, tremendous job by all our staff and the administration in presenting the information. And, uh, Madam City Attorney, you were really on point today. And, uh, I didn't get corrected one time note. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.